I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free of gravity and justice for all.
Do we have handouts for this?
Yes, it's a great big pad. I think this is me.
Oh, I'm sure I've got it, yeah. Oh, yeah, there it is, yeah.
Does anybody else need, does anybody else need what it needs? Did you want to start?
Amy, do you want to ask if she would like for us to start? Okay. It's remarkable weather, isn't it?
How are we supposed to be in the 60s this week?
I don't know. I wonder if this is global warming this week.
Well, you know, last year I was convinced we didn't have any global warming really.
Hey, I'm all in favor. I don't know why we're fighting this global climate change thing because it's working out, I think.
That certainly might be a nice line.
They complain and complain about global climate change, although it's changed in my lifetime a number of times. And in all this crisis, we're going to have the ice sheets melting away and yet they're growing.
It's okay to start without.
Okay. All right, we'll start with you, approval if you'd like to make a motion for that.
So moved.
For the July 14th.
Right.
For admitting meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I should sign this and pass this around, right? This was sitting in front of me with the signature on it.
That's for the minutes, yeah. There's correspondence from the Department of Youth Services regarding the non-site detention centers inspection report. It's in our packet, is this a report? Would you like to comment on certain things?
That's the Ohio Department of Youth Services who completes the inspections and audits of local detention centers to ensure compliance with the Ohio Administrative Code 513937, which outlines the detention center standards. September 23rd, we were audited and we were in compliance with 100% of mandatory standards, 100% of the non-mandatory standards, for a total of compliance with 250 standards set out by the state of Ohio.
I would like to quote from the letter we received from the Department of Youth Services. They say, "On a personal note, thank you, Tom and Brandon, for your cooperation and professionalism during this inspection. It is clear that your staff respect and value your leadership and commitment to their safety as well as the safety of the youth, so congratulations." Okay. Sorry, we're on number three, just starting number. Do we need to accept that report?
Not necessarily.
Okay, all right. We're on number three. Okay, we'll go on then to number three. We need journal entries, request for acknowledging the receipt of the following. Number A is population per diem review, fourth quarter 2014. I think if you have a chance to look at that, if you would make a motion or I guess we'll just do a journal entry unless there's objections. Is that okay with everyone?
I'm not even sure what we're talking about. What were we?
Three on your agenda. It would be three A. The per diem review. Perhaps you had commented on that. The population per diem review, fourth quarter of 2014. Do you have that in front of you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, it's simply the report out on what the financials were for lunch or whatever.
We just need to accept it through a general.
Yeah, I make that motion. Second.
All in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
The next is the fourth quarter per diem. Is there a question? I think we just need to do a journal entry.
Right, actually, we can do journal entry for all of them.
Right.
Is that what you had intended maybe?
Yes, that's what I intended. Let's accept, and I move that we accept all of those.
All right, okay. Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
A draft resolution to adopt the annual appropriation for the shortage of Georgia County Juvenile Detention Center.
I have no questions on it, so I can make a motion to approve it. Second.
Any further discussion? If none, I'm in favor, roll call, please.
Rob, sir?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Maureen?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes, yes.
Is this what I'm signing for here?
That's budget.
All of it? There's four, five stickers on there, so they all are?
There's several of the same, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, to move on. The next is items brought to our attention and discussed with legal counselors when we see it. And we've got these up here in advance, asking that we go ahead and proceed with having our meetings with rules and regulations and with a slate of officers. Before we do these individually, individual resolutions, would you like to discuss that or ask any questions? Is Denise here?
No. I think the purpose of this is to remind us of our requirements for having open meetings.
Yes.
There was some question about some of the meetings that we're having, and we're just reaffirming that these are public meetings with public notice.
Is that correct, Maureen? Yes. Is that something that you're amenable to?
Yeah, I didn't know that there was anything that had come up as far as a question of that, but, you know, I just, I mean, we always, within our, within our meeting notes at the end of, you know, whenever we have one, we probably advertise this meeting coming up for at least four of our meetings that we have this coming up.
Sure.
So, you know, as part of our future meetings, and we make as announcements.
All right. We would, Amy will continue as clerk, but we also thought that we should have an acting clerk, and that would be the clerk in your county. So again, would you want to make resolutions?
Sure, to appoint Christine as acting, as acting clerk?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
And to add to that, she's, she's probably in her third or fourth month of pregnancy right now.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know how that's, you know, as far as like, is Amy going to be the primary clerk?
Yes, yes. Oh, absolutely.
So, just so that there's that understanding that if there's a situation like that, we might have to make some kind of a change later, but she'll probably, I think she's in her fourth month, right? So, just so that you're aware of that. And other than that, I mean, she's open to doing, to help him with whatever.
What about a person serving as president of our joint board? Would either of you?
I think Blake would like that, actually. He's not here, but.
Yeah, I would nominate Blake for that position.
Yeah.
He's not here, that's okay.
I would.
I would second that if Blake would like that.
Sure. I'm sure he'd love it.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
Question, are we doing vice president now?
Yes, we would be.
Is this the vice president? We have, this is fine with me, but we need to do presidents.
That's what we just did.
We just did. That would be Blake for Georgia County.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. I thought I heard the word vice president, that's why.
Is there a nomination for vice president over?
Somebody from Portage County, we should, to be honest.
Excuse me, I stopped the conversation, so we need to vote on president.
We did.
Oh, I thought we did.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
Well, I asked to pause for a moment while I clarified it, so I don't know. Anyway, it's fine.
So do we want to reopen that to make another motion for Blake?
No, no, not necessarily. We'll just have to vote on it.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is there a nomination for vice president?
I nominate Kathleen.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
All in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to appoint the clerk for the board? I will nominate Amy.
Amy. Southside connect.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate the aye.
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 We already have our acting clerk.
This is. Do we even need to vote on it? Do we need to vote on the acting clerk?
I thought we did.
We just did.
We had.
We did that first. We did it out of order, but we did it.
Yes, unfortunately, it was out of order. That's my fault for getting in the room late. I apologize. We did have a medical issue with an employee. This is going to be the difficult one, I think. Resolution to fix the days and hours of the regular meeting. I don't know the best way to proceed with.
The way I wrote it, Maureen, was about Denise being called by the board as needed and on the recommendation of a superintendent of that board. Because you don't really have a set immediate date.
Right.
And I move to accept that.
I will second that. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
The resolution to establish rules and notification of the Joint Board of Commissioners, 2016 meetings. Also, that was.
I did have it in packet. The only question that I had, we can call Christine to confirm which newspaper you would advertise.
We would do the Maple Leaf and the, the Maple Leaf and the Chugren, or.
News Herald?
News, News Herald and Geoguard Courier.
All three?
Those would be the three.
And then we'll call Christine to see where you put it on your website, what the website, you know, they have this, because that's what we have in here. We have on the website, on your account, it's up for you to save.
Yep.
That was on the question that I thought.
Okay. Is there?
I move to accept that.
Thank you. I like your stuff. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Everybody else is aye.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence in there. Before we adjourn, I don't know, Tom, do you have any, any words of wisdom for us or anything? Do you gentlemen have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I have no concluding comments.
Okay.
How are we doing population-wise in the detention center right now?
It has been low for the last few months, but in this current trend throughout right now, all of the counties.
Is that not a good thing? Is that pointing to less crime, less drugs? What is that pointing to?
I think there's a number of factors.
You can't catch them?
I think, well, there's a decrease in, within the population of the schools, so that's a factor. There are, has been less violent crime, and many of the kids are not coming to the detention center for, 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 for.
I've heard a rumor out on the street that they just don't want to come to this detention center, so they're going to crime elsewhere. So I don't know what you're hard on, what to be, what for us.
I don't know if, before we started, because when I was like coming into the room, our legal counsel is here, Tim Piro, and also Denise Smith. I don't know if you have ever met. And Denise, of course, advised us on protocols and has been working with us on, as Kathleen mentioned, we had, some questions had ensued about public meetings, so that's why we're where we are. Thank you for your understanding and diligence.
The only other thing that I would like to comment is, is once again, you know, with the inspection report, you know, it's, this is my, going on to my, into my fourth year, and every, every year, you know, we end up having the 100% and it's pretty, pretty good, especially, I come from a background of criminal justice and law enforcement myself, so it's always a major plus, especially knowing how they could be, you know, very, very selective on specific items, so.
Sure.
You know, good job, and it's just, you know, says a lot to what, to what Tom and I said.
Absolutely. You appreciate Tom.
Yeah.
In addition to that, we, it's very gratifying, I'm sure, particularly coming from the enforcement.
It is, it is, yeah.
In addition to that, we always have a clean audit, which is impressive.
Yes.
Yeah.
It doesn't, they say we are on a roll.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Have a good day. Good seeing you guys.
Enjoy the beautiful weather.
Yep.
Take care now. If you want to shop at all while you're in Portage County, please do so.
Is there a place to shop? You guys have stores? What's your tax?
Yes, and we have, we have a Walgreens right downtown, and you can buy everything you buy.
Walgreens? Any gun stores you have in the Great Lakes outdoor or something down there?
We do have some.
You're looking for one.
We do have some gun and munitions stores that we can get you directly if you're being a devil.
What's that?
I think you're being a devil.
Could be, I've been known for that.
But it's a likable devil.
Yeah, there you go. What's your sales tax down here?
Well, it's seven and a quarter.
Seven and a quarter. See, we're at 6.75. That's the reason everybody runs to Georgia County.
You have a valid issue, don't you?
No, I don't think so. That's to raise our taxes, sales tax, no.
Don't remind me.
Wait, is this supposed to be sent?
Are we done?
I'm signing.
Amy wants us to say meeting minutes. Anything else on the, I think signing.
Good morning, Mr. Steiner.
It's a nice morning to drive down there, though.
Do you want to, do you want to sign?
We've got everything signed. I don't know who else to sign it with.
Yeah, I know, I think I signed that.
Okay.
I think he was the first to sign.
Okay. I think you need to.
It's got me as absent for that meeting.
Oh, okay, then we just give it to you.
Oh, I, did I sign?
I think you signed it.
I did sign it.
Oh, good.
I think we're all good.
I was also coming in late.
Did you sign that?
We do have a person.
I told you we had a situation.
So are we, are we good with it?
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Merry Christmas to you and happy holidays.
You too.
We will recess as county commissioners and convene our county weeks commissioners.
Can you hold on just one second?
Yes, no, I'll be able to hold on because I'm still lagging the market here. It's supposed to be.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do we go in as regular commissioners and then recess?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, we work as.
Can we start with the question?
No, that's all we did. I make a motion that we approve the December 3, 2015, regular minutes, meeting minutes, and the December 9 special meeting minutes.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
We will now recess as county commissioners and convene our solidary commissioners. Bill?
Good morning.
If I could interject very quickly, we have Mr. Tom Pullahan here today. He is from Bell Equipment, and when we get to that issue, I will ask for an executive sanction regarding, or imminent litigation.
Okay.
And I don't know if you want to do anything on your regular agenda first with Mr. Steiner
or go straight into this.
Why don't we go straight in since we have.
Why don't we accept the meeting minutes first with December 3 meeting of solidary services?
Good idea, all right.
Good move.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of December 3, 2015.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
And is there a motion for executive session?
I make a motion that we go into executive session for pending litigation.
Second.
Pending an imminent litigation.
Oh, imminent, imminent.
Just imminent?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes. Yes.
At this point, because.
No, you don't say.
Yeah, I know.
We need to dissect. Is there a motion of?
Motion accepted.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second. I think.
Thanks, Kathleen. Yes. Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
There are actions?
No.
No, at this point, no.
There is no action.
I think the county, because of its nature of the beast, takes a significantly slower time to do contracts, to do vending arrangements, to do all of that for lots of different reasons. And most of these individuals, these companies, including Bill himself, coming from the public sector, expects it to be done and, and wants it to be done.
Sure.
It needs to be done quickly, and because they, they operate like that.
Well, you know, one thing I got focused on was that they proceeded based on the resolution.
And I, and. They were advised back when they were proceeding on the resolution, you realize you're going out on a limb there.
Absolutely.
We don't owe you, we don't owe you nothing.
No, I agree. I think that's a very relevant point.
Do you need to be with the others?
No, Tim's with them and he'll handle, he's the one who's been handling this anyhow.
Oh, goodness.
They'll figure it out, I'm sure.
Is, yes, is there a motion to adjourn, solidary?
Oh, yes. I saw.
All in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now reconvene as county commissioners. Okay. Let me get your packet. Who is?
Who's on first?
Yeah, who's on first? Are you here just to go over all these hires?
No, there's a number of items in open session also.
Because I think we need to streamline this process.
Yeah.
A topic for another day. Okay, who are you going to?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We need to go into executive session for the first half. I apologize.
That's all right. If you're at the bottom.
You need Amy. For personnel.
Amy, I make a motion to go into executive session for personnel, personnel matters such as hiring, job description modification, contract amendment discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes. Denise, I am still back to that, them proceeding.
It's a very different mindset. And usually it's pounding the table. It's been a good experience.
I'm going to call you late.
That's it. GAW and all the rest.
Are we, are we, is there a motion? That's where I reset. Okay. A motion come out of executive session?
Second.
Roll call.
Kathleen? Yes. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Maureen? Action?
Yes, there is plenty of action.
Hannah is on to provide.
Maybe I will just defer.
I'm going to excuse myself then and move on to my, because I think I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you. If I don't see you all. Merry Christmas.
Yes, there is, a chat on, rather than a chat. I think I'll just ask you. Okay.
Yep. We also have an additional one. Two.
Yes, we do the MOUs. Yes, you're right, we do take action. I mean, two, two, we can probably, what's your pleasure? Do you want to do those individually first or?
Yeah, we could do that.
All right. Someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the request for promotion, transfer, revise the workforce administrative position, and request the post, the four posts. And shall I also have the two MOUs?
Yes.
Okay, we have two MOUs that with the union, one would allow for an employee to take time off during the day and then make it up in the same day, which would be like a flex hour. Could only be done four times per year maximum. And the other MOU would be, let me kind of bring this one, allow a person who is in probationary period to apply for a different post during probation.
Correct.
It will be under the constraint of one year, though.
Correct.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate the aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll bring your attention to the open agenda, agency data report. I present this to you every month. I'm not going to go through it page by page. I'm just going to highlight a few things. We are pleased that our customer service center in our public assistance area, although there is still an abundance of calls that are coming through there, from September to October, we have 1,000 less calls from 8,800 to 7,800, so that, that's a good sign for us. In our Ohio Means Jobs Resource Center, we saw an increase in our customers from September to October. September was 326 customers and October 506. So the word is getting out. Unfortunately, that might mean people are unemployed, but also could be underemployed and just looking for assistance. Positive news in our child protective area, we had 171 children in our custody in the month of September. October was 165, so that was six less children in custody, which is a positive sign there. I'm not going to go into any more detail on that report, but those were really the highlights or the differences from last month.
You know, in some ways, it's a shame that, because of the time constraint that you can't, and that's my really point that I made in the executive session. We need more time to vote substantive things like this and policy decisions than we do approving, okay, now this one will go from here to here and we'll post this position for such and such. So I needed to purge my segments.
I agree. If I could, Mandy's here as a guest, so I'm going to skip her item real quick so I can go through some very small items. Item K is a secret shopper memo. On November 11, the Assistant Chief of Veterans Workforce Services came into our workforce area as a secret shopper to see how, what services he would receive and how he would[1712.52] he would be treated by our staff. And following his visit, he commended our employees, thanked them for their professionalism and excellent customer service. So, I just wanted to acknowledge our Ohio Means jobs staff under Brian Boykins' administration. They did a great job there.
Congratulations. That's really a good thing to hear.
And it was called a secret shopper.
They call them secret shoppers.
It was undercover.
Yeah. It's very covert.
Absolutely.
Item N, in our public assistance area, we're really excited because this is the first time that we're inviting our long-term care, nursing home facilities, waiver facilities, assisted living facilities, here to our building for a meet and greet. Our nursing home staff want to get to know them, talk about how they can streamline their processes better. So, 38 nursing homes and waiver divisions will be invited here on Thursday, January 28th. We're going to provide them with a continental breakfast, and we're glad about expanding that relationship. Several months ago, I'm only presenting to you one program, not a tuition reimbursement program today, but a succession planning program that is of no cost to the agency. This program is a six-month program. I discussed it with you at length at one point, but it provides curriculum, some support and some experiences for staff that have a desire to have promotional opportunities. This program would be supported by all management, and we would be able to help support staff in their endeavors and hope to keep them here in their careers at Portage County. So, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, but again, this would be no cost to the agency. We'd like to implement it at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Any questions, Board in there? This is a long time without one we discussed, and I think at the time I had a couple of questions, but were those?
Implemented.
Those were implemented.
Correct. You didn't get the, after the fact, we brought something up to Deb last night, so you have the updates there, so if you need to reference it. But everything language-wise was implemented.
Is it there?
Yes, everything.
Is that, yeah.
Yes.
No, I think it's good.
Okay.
So, we will add that to the agenda.
P, there's a, you have this colorful flyer in your packet. Our committee, Employee Enhancement, wants to do an ugly sweater contest on December 16th, same day as our Christmas party, so you'll see a lot of ugly sweaters. And then Q, you also have this flyer, Josh Crims is a former NFL player and Kent State graduate. He is doing a meet and greet at Summit Mall on December 15th. A percentage of his proceeds for autographs, he's donating to Portage County Presents for Kids Campaign. For anybody brings a free gift, they will, a gift, they will get a free autograph from him. So, he's, you see our logo on the flyer. It's advertised that it's a collaborative with Portage County. Also, you have a polo donations resolution. Our Employee Enhancement Committee received information from staff. They wanted to see if we could purchase shirts with the Portage County emblem on them. So, the committee had already had money. We purchased those, and those staff would like to donate to get a shirt, so it would be for a donation. And we have 26 staff that you'll see with Portage County Job and Family Services shirts, as long as you're in agreement with us moving forward on this.
There's a
Typo?
It's $500, I assume.
Correct, there's another zero needed.
We need the other zero.
Okay. And then the last
Do you want us to take action on this right now? Shall I make a motion?
Sure.
This is a resolution.
Yes, this one is.
I make a motion that we accept the polo cash donations from Portage County employees to raise money for the Employee Enhancement Committee for Portage County Job and Family Services.
Second.
All in favor, please give me a say aye.
Aye.
The last resolution are a variety of donations in the total sum of $2,425 from community partners and citizens of Portage County to support the Presents for Kids Campaign, so we're asking you to accept that.
I make a motion to accept the cash donations from private and digital organizations and or businesses for the PC SA Foster Children's Christmas Donation to the Portage County Job and Family Services.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll give you a say aye.
Aye.
That made me recall, do I owe somebody money for?
You don't owe anybody money. If you want to donate, yeah, you don't owe, though.
No. Well, no, I think I committed to it.
Yeah.
It just made me realize. I'm sorry.
You can still donate, if you want.
Okay, so who do I give that money to?
Myself or Kim Buschak, who's not here this week.
All right, I'll just, if you're here and I'm here at the same time as we walk out of here, I'll just give you a
If not, I can come back up this afternoon.
Okay. Just don't let me forget, we have a pretty, because obviously I forgot before.
That's okay. Last item is Mandy. Mandy Burdenelli is a supervisor under Brian's administrative in Ohio in the jobs area. She, this is her baby, her pilot project. We want to present it to you before we move forward, but it's a great opportunity for the community, so.
Okay.
Which one is that? Is that any pilot?
It's a colorful packet, yeah.
This one?
Red and black.
Let me just, let me pull it here.
Okay. Give her mine.
You want this copy?
Probably, yeah. I just went, I went by it three times. Thank you.
And I've just been informed, I went from having five minutes to three minutes, so I'm going to talk quickly. That was the note I was writing.
No, no, just take your lunchtime.
No, I don't want to do that, but I just want to give you a brief overview of the program. Ohio Means Jobs, or how, O-M-J Works stands for Ohio Means Jobs, Workforce Opportunities and Readiness Knowledge for Students. It's a pilot program that we want to implement in the spring after the holidays. With workforce transformation, we have so many changes going on downstairs, and at the same time, we're dealing with framework restructures under IOA, and we have comprehensive case management. At our doorstep, we see a real push to target the youth population. By targeting the youth population, we think that we're going to have the largest impact for change long-term. Right, it is, right. At the same time, we're going through all of these changes, so is the Ohio Department of Education. They're, they are making reforms and mandates under the school. They're no longer requiring the school to educate students in the traditional sense, but they're now requiring them to link their education to careers and to prepare the students for the workforce. So, we think that education and reform, education reform and workforce transformation really are two sides of the same coin. They go hand in hand because we have the common goal of developing this educated, skilled workforce for the future. So, that's kind of where the concept came from, that's what it was born out of. And in the, in the slides that you have there, I don't have them numbered, but there, the nuts and bolts of the pilot program is that we want to have an O-M-J presence in the school. We've selected to outreach to Wyndham High School to implement the program. What we would like to do is take four of our O-M-J staff, put them into the high school classroom setting, one day a week over a two to three month period. Also, in the slides, you'll see that we've developed ideally an eight-week curriculum that we would like to talk about. Again, I say ideally because it's all based upon, it's subject to change based upon the needs of the school, if they, if they, how, how in-depth they want us to go. But one thing that we're super excited about with the pilot is we want to offer the opportunity to host a career fair. We want to bring back former students that have gone on to get traditional four-years degrees, two-year programs, maybe some certificate programs, maybe some students that put education off for a couple of years and then realized, oh, I need that, I'm going to go back. And we think that there'll be more of an impact hearing that from their peers. Then, we also want to comprise workforce panel, that's a, so that the students can go and talk to employers that offer in-demand careers right here in our county, so that if people go, graduate from high school and go on, they realize that there are opportunities for careers right here in Portage County.
Didn't tell me why you picked Wyndham.
So, yes, that's, the next thing is why we chose Wyndham. You'll see, I believe it's slide six, maybe nine, six.
Second page.
Slide, yeah, slide six. We, we chose Wyndham High School. What you see there is stats that were pulled from the Ohio Department of Education. It's all of the school districts in our county. We wanted to start small. Wyndham has small numbers. That way, we can get our feet wet, realize what works, what doesn't work. And also, you'll notice they have the highest level of student poverty rate. It's at 73%. And we know that students that are in a high poverty rate are five times more likely to drop out of high school than those that come from higher income brackets. And it's also then associated with long-term problems like homelessness, drug abuse, criminal offenses, those kind of things. So, our goal is to really try and get the students thinking about their futures now so that we can have a long-term effect in our community and our economy.
I just, I know I'm interrupting.
That's okay.
You might want to contact Lissa Berry, that's Elizabeth Berry.
Okay.
She is CEO of Delta Systems in Streetsboro, and she's been very instrumental in getting the Joint Locational School, I think, to introduce a curriculum for machines. So, she coaches, it's not your father's machine shop anymore.
Right.
But that's private, private sector.
That's exactly what we want on our workforce panel.
Yes, and, and I would think because they had that effort up and going, she would, I shouldn't speak for her, would be more than willing to assist, as would probably the Portage Development Board.
Right.
But she's chair, she chairs the executive committee. I've worked with her over a number of years. Vicki is now representing.
Good.
The commissioners.
We'll reach out to her, then.
But I, I'm as confident as in, and I am sitting here right now, that, that she would be more than willing to help you.
Good, thank you. We'll definitely reach out to her. In the end, we def, we want to look at how we're going to measure success for this program, and we've outlined some of the factors or the things that we're going to look at, but we don't want to just do the program and walk away from it. We really want to look at how impactful we were. So, we're going to follow up with the teachers and the students over a several-year period. We're going to do, offer outreach and support several times a year, just to see where they're at, did what, was it, were, did we make an impact? Was it, was it helpful at all, or how could we make it more helpful? But ultimately, the bottom line is we just want to be able to take the information offered to other schools that are interested in our resources and try to be proactive in our approach in preparing our youth for higher education, prepare for the workforce, whatever it is that they need to be successful.
Now, are you going to address, like, why Wyndham? I understand that. You know, I noticed there's another one that's number two here. How are you going to move on, Mandy?
Well, it's funny, because the schools, like I said, they're in, in change right now. They're starting to reach out to us.
Okay.
Ravenna is the assistant principal that, yes, he's reached out to us. We're going to be involved in their My Future Day, they're calling it. So, we're going to go in, talk about soft skills, resume writing, those types of things. Crestwood's calling us. So, it's really, I mean, we're excited about where this is going to go because we think it's going to be, I mean, we can have a huge impact.
You were at leadership.
Yep.
Do you remember the young man that was asking us at the end?
Yes.
What type of careers would you, and one of the things we, we talked about with him or pointed out was, maybe, I lost my train of thought here, was just that, not in the sense just how, you know, follow your heart in the sense of what you want to do, but the careers in the sense of, I guess, exploring them and, which I think, you know, when I've talked to some college students, I've asked them when they prepare for, for the job market, and some of them will look at me like, what are you talking about? And are there any specific courses, say, at the college level? How do you even do a resume?
Right.
And I'm surprised that there are not. Now, they have placement services.
Right.
But I would, I would think anything like that that can be introduced in the secondary school system.
Well, it's funny, because it used to be, I remember when I was school, they talked to us, what do you want to be when you grow up?
Yes.
They linked that to us, that we were thinking about our futures, and they've kind of gotten away from that.
Yes, yes.
But that's what this new framework is. They need to offer students more of an opportunity to explore those careers, to see, oh, you know, what's your mom do? Bring her in, let's talk about her career, or what your dad does. And so, that's what we want to do, and, and the thing is, is that's built into OhioMeansJobs.com. We're not reinventing the wheel. It's there. We're just linking them to the information because that's our expertise. So, we, when I say we're excited, I mean, we're excited. We're ready to do cartwheels about this program, so.
I expect to see you doing that.
And, yeah. And you might. But, yeah, so we're excited about it.
We want your support before we move forward with the school system, so we wanted to present it to you to make sure.
Oh, that's a good, 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 good.
We do, with Stormwater, our Stormwater program, we have a component, educational component of that, and soil and water and the county engineer working very closely with several school systems in some pilot program. So, it's, it's wonderful that not only do we have that linkage there, but we, we have it saying the job and family services.
Yep.
Thank you.
We're excited.
Finally, 15 seconds. It's not on your agenda. I just wanted to introduce you to Darren Kearns. He's our new fiscal administrator, replacing Megan Griffith.
Hello.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you all.
Darren has 15 years with JFS Auditing Department. He was a supervisor there. Five years with Wayne County JFS, so we're really excited to have him.
Do you know Todd?
We have a meeting scheduled.
I have a feeling you will.
Yeah. We're meeting in a couple of weeks. So, I just wanted you to put a name with the face, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Kelly Jo, could you, and Brian, could you do information for a press release?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Do you have it?
No.
I'll send it to you. Okay. Come on up, come on down.
Okay, this is Kelly Jo's.
Are you here for the budget?
Yes.
Oh, I'll take it. Oh, no.
That is the typical response I receive, usually not here, but.
No, 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 no. I took yesterday and it said the 15th, the final decision on the budget, so I thought, well, that gives us a reprieve for tomorrow's session, but I was wrong.
Well, today, we got to decide so that the 15th, we can do.
So, we have the final document. Oh, no.
Do you have, do you need yours?
Let me, that's why I went back to my office. I didn't bring my manager, so I got it now.
Just to make
Today's agenda.
Are you going to invite this guy?
I want to walk through my agenda. There's not much we're going to pass right now, but I want the board to be aware of time ticks here. Then, we need to talk about the outside agencies. Get those answers, get those questions answered, and then we can go back and do some things or whatever the case may be.
Let me just get through this, oh, I want to keep that. All right, I've got everything.
Oh, we said.
He's got an agenda, it's probably over there.
Oh, okay, well, let me get my agenda. I think it's right in front of you. Just adding up. Could be.
Okay.
All these, okay.
Items one and two do need passed today. I don't have the attachments to you yet. I was working on those when I got caught up with the bell discussion. I will have those to you, just if they can get passed before the board leaves. I'll work lunch to get those up. Those are amendments to the current budgets. One of them is the 27th pay that needs put in before we all go red on those and that type of thing, some other urine cleanups. Number three and four, I will actually bring on Tuesday. Those are the measures to approve the budgets, since we haven't finished yesterday. So, those we will bring forward Tuesday. That was three and four. Number five is the resolution that will stop disbursements to the Park Board. I don't know if the board wants to pass that today, or if the board wants to wait till Tuesday, but that's, that's an item you could act on.
I can make the motion. Make a motion to amend Resolution 071091 to end distributions of local government funds to the Portage County Park District effective December. It doesn't have a date, 31st, 2015.
You can put, yeah. Yeah, they, we only do one, one a month, that's why.
Is there a second?
Second.
Why don't you roll call it, roll call?
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Yes.
Number six is the 1.5 for the departments over which you're the appointing authority along with the adjustment to the CMS. Again, we've never talked about pulling that out of the budget, but you have not passed the budget yet. So, I don't know if you want that to wait till Tuesday or if you wanna act on that today as well.
We can act on that.
We've decided about the one.
Yes.
That's what this resolution's doing. So, if you're comfortable, we can do that.
Go ahead and do that, sir.
Is there anything? A motion to authorize a cost of living pay adjustment for full-time and part-time non-bargaining employees of those county departments for which the Board of Commissioners is appointing authority or co-appointing authority.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicky? Yes.
Maureen?
And then, number seven is a transfer from the Kent Court Capital Fund where the fees the judges are collecting go to the general fund for their share of that debt service.
A motion to transfer from Fund 4007, Kent Court Capital Projects, to Fund 3013, Geo Bonds, two thousand and one.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicky? Yes.
Maureen?
The reason I'm not on point is because I'm using yesterday's agenda.
You got an easy day scheduled, don't you?
Well, both of us here are green.
All right. So, now, we can go from yesterday's discussion. We had talked about putting sixty-five thousand for the prosecutor into a contingency until Denise and Janet come back with an MOU. We talked about putting another sixty thousand into contingency pending the discussions on building security. We talked about adding fifty-five thousand to adult probation for a third person. And we talked about adding thirty-five thousand to juvenile for their secretarial position that they had. And then, you had agreed to Brian's request for the software, the whatever you call them, tablets and chairs, and then, the public defender for.
And training.
And the training, you're correct.
Training, yes, and the software.
And the public defender for his train, travel, maintenance supplies, and photocopying. If we're all on the same page, no changes to that, then we're done with the general fund section.
Okay. Did we, I'm trying to think if there were others.
Well, I put down on my sheet plus sixty-five for human resources on my sheet.
That's the prosecutor, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, plus sixty thousand for, to the contingency from.
Of the security?
Yeah. And nothing on the auditor, the treasurer. The prosecutor, we put sixty-five thousand in for HR.
You say nothing for the auditor. We did approve those, didn't we?
No, we were not.
No.
Oh, oh, it was IT. I'm sorry.
Yeah, right. That sixty-five on HR and the prosecutor are the same, sixty-five iPhone.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Nothing for recorder, clerk of courts, nothing, comment fees, nothing, municipal, nothing, domestic. We put the two hundred dollars in.
Correct, that is correct.
For the juvenile, we put thirty-five thousand, which you already recommended.
You know what? I'd like to bring up that domestic again, court. And the reason being, Paula got me last night and talked to me. And she said, you know, she, what she was doing was bringing her people up to that old data, whatever that, those salaries.
Comp plan?
Yeah, the comp plan. And it's, it's old. It's out of date. We know that. But she said, that's what she was doing with the eighteen thousand, nine eighty-six. And, you know, obviously, she's not getting the thirty-five to bring the part-time to full-time. But, you know, I feel pretty strongly that, that we should do her, her personal merit adjustments now. I'm only one of three, but that's just.
Would that be then in addition to the eight or to get it up to the?
No, no, that's.
That would get it up to the?
For those, you'd need another ten.
Right. So, could we just add a ten to that?
Let me, let me double.
I know we are, we are going to have this come to us also, within our own departments.
Absolutely.
Well, no, I'm seriously, we are. So, because of our, I think, our healthier carry-in for what we should.
But we don't, we're not rolling in, don't we?
You know what? If you look at my, if you look at my record, I'm probably the nine. I am the Grinch.
I understand that.
I think what we were discussing last time, we talked about this, was that we already put in eight thousand, six hundred and forty for her to use at her discretion to help accommodate some of these. And in addition, we are going to recommend an additional amount for two thousand seventeen.
That was the original plan for everybody.
Right.
I'd be inclined to, if that would go from the eight to the ten.
We would need another ten.
We would need another ten, yeah.
And on top of the eight.
Right. She, she wanted eighteen. We gave her eight to, and to give her everything she wanted, we'll take another ten. Yeah.
And, you know, every person that came in wanted additional money, like Board of Elections and others.
Well, I think we're gonna have to revisit that.
Well, Judge, Judge Gilletteau did a good job of making sure all her staff was evaluated.
Yes, yes.
There is, there is a lot of staff that needs evaluated. So, she's not alone in having a large number of staff behind. She's one of the first to come forward and organize the process.
So, why don't we make her a precedence and go ahead and, I would think, to me, that would be appropriate. So.
So, add ten then to that, the domestic?
I would be amenable to doing that.
So, then, that would be eighteen, six forty.
And I would hope that all the others that are in line will do the same thing in the sense of those evaluations. I know we're going to deal with this with Board of Elections.
Shall I go on then?
Yeah.
I think we were through adult probation, right?
Yes.
We had a fifty-five thousand for third position there under the sheriff. I think there was nothing.
There was, I did leave a little uncertain. I believe all three of you were on board with starting the CO salaries right now from the new sales tax money.
Right.
The question was whether the road patrol, whether we were waiting or starting it now. Originally, we were talking wait, but I think, Maureen, you brought up you'd like it to start now. I didn't know if that was it.
But when do we start collecting sales tax in March?
We won't even collect till March. As of right now, and that's part of why we need the carryover, at least for the beginning of the year, we're going to have to cash advance the new sales tax fund so that we can start with the jail modification, these salaries, et cetera. By the end of the year, we'll be made whole.
Sure.
It's just a matter of how much we need to start it with. You know, the road patrols would add, add to that.
Could you figure that in there? I would like us to start the road patrol.
Are we, how, how many road patrols are we talking?
Well, it's four hundred thousand.
Four?
For the four point two people or whatever. We had talked about four hundred thousand of the sheriff to let him decide how to.
Okay. Being that we're going to retrieve it.
Yeah. The, you know, of that four hundred thousand, probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred would need cash advanced because even though we start collecting in March, you're going to be spending for the addition. You're going to already have a hole from the COs. And then, these, financially, my preference would be to wait, but we can do it if you want to.
I think it's a good idea to wait till March. That's not very far out. And.
I think with the crime increase, I would like us to start it.
I would like us to start it in January.
Okay.
You had mentioned yesterday to us that you have set aside money for, was it five new cruisers and five?
Regular.
Regular. So, that's a go also.
Yes.
Yes, in fact.
So, it would seem like if we could dovetail that with the cruisers and the road patrol, that would be a very good thing.
And Joanne, next Tuesday, will probably be bringing the resolution to necessity if the board are comfortable doing those vehicles.
They won't be done until January, right?
We wanna get the resolution in so we can start the process, but yeah, they won't be delivered.
You're wrong there until January.
Right, the actual payout. We may encumber, try and encumber some other things.
And they'll be putting the lights or whatever.
Yeah, the, even if we ordered in January, they wouldn't come until July or August.
You know what?
But we wanna get, we wanna be at the front of the list, you know.
My compliments to you because this is something you have talked about since really coming aboard about being.
Buying the cars.
On a regular basis.
Well, on a regular basis, just getting us away from those leases and so, I mean, it really has come to fruition now for us beginning this new year.
And that's going to get us away from this stuff that we go through.
And I think it'll, I think it'll, the sheriff will be happy because he'll know how.
You know, I would think the sheriff will be.
I think, yeah, I think it's gonna work out better for everyone. We just gotta get, get there.
Get it going.
Yeah.
So, shall I go on? Board of Elections, five thousand, data processing.
We did that.
The five thousand, five hundred plus the six thousand. The seventeen was already included and the twenty-four hundred was included. And then, the public defender, we added the three, five hundred seventy and two fifty. And so, that ends.
Is there anything else?
The outside agencies, do we need to? We only had to talk about those.
You know what, actually, and it just, I didn't put on this list because it just came last week, but you are going to need to add eighteen-ish because of the job offer to the electrical inspector and the building inspector. That will go to the building inspection department.
Do we have them on here?
No, because that just showed up. If the board's okay with that, I will add that, those funds as well. I, I think it's eighteen between the two of them. His, the, the electrical did, did accept the.
Oh, he did accept?
Letter, from what I understand, from Joanne.
Right, yeah. She did get back to us and say, yeah, I think it was a smiley face and she said,
Okay.
"Good news, you're accepting."
Along with that is a contract that needs adjusted. There is not money for any retainer of any sort next year in this budget as well.
Retainer for what?
For any type of legal counsel.
Well, I think we should have those discussions probably fairly soon after the first of the year if we're going to do.
I don't have money for it.
Negotiations?
Yes. Any type of contract. Our intent was to do it on.
Right. Well, the contract with Mr. Habauski, that's over.
That's ended, yeah.
So, we.
And there is no money in the budget?
No.
I just wanted to be clear. If that were changing, this is the time.
I would be thinking that you're gonna wanna put something there, but all of our negotiations are out further than.
Yeah.
But there may be reason to do something as a.
Well, the idea then was as they come up, we were gonna hire councils. That's still the plan.
I'd also like us to talk to some other attorneys.
Okay.
Depending on what we decide to do. But do you think it's prudent not to have any money set aside for that?
See, I'm thinking maybe, maybe put in five, five hundred a month or something, times twelve. I mean, I don't know. How often do they come up? Five hundred a month?
Well, that's, we.
For the attorney?
Typically, we have the contingency.
No, no, I'm not laughing at.
No, we're not gonna use one every month, is what I'm saying.
Maybe you ought to put.
Well, that's what I mean.
No, 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 but maybe you oughta, maybe say a thousand a month.
I think it should be a flat fee, like either twelve thousand or.
Yes.
Well, I did, I did prepare for around fifteen in the contingency.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's?
Yeah, twelve to fifteen.
Typically, in the past, a single contract had cost around ten or twelve.
Sure.
With all the other extra hearings and that sort of thing.
Five hundred a month. Vicky, you drive a hard bargain.
Or kinda have her negotiate.
No, no, you're right, you know.
I just wanted to make sure that that was, still the intention was not to have a general retain.
Twelve or thirteen or twenty-nine?
I worked fifteen in the contingency as.
No, no, come back down.
That we should be okay. All right. So, our last items then are the outside agencies.
Okay.
Well, I've got some real thoughts on this, but I'll let someone else begin.
Well, I think we, we covered a couple of them. The motor pool, we decided not to add a person, correct? Until we decide what we're going to do and.
Right.
Several areas.
Yeah, though that, yeah.
The prosecutor, the sixty-five is already done. And the forty-two, weren't we gonna put that in like?
Yeah, we, I thought we were on the. We're on the last page of the outside agencies. We already went through all of this. The very last page. Outside.
Oh, APL.
With the APL, yeah.
APL, we were going to somewhat put in a ban until we, until we had some discussions.
And I'll, I'll, I emailed Denise, and I can work up a letter. We always send the agencies a letter. I can work up and let the board see if they like the wording. We can do something of that regard. I think I know where you wanna go there.
Yeah.
So, we're putting none in at this point? Is that the idea?
Well, I thought we had some discussion about maybe in contingency.
Right, that's being over there.
Once we talked with them, I don't, I don't recall.
That was the idea.
We didn't have a figure on that, though, did we?
No, we were gonna take the whole amount, though, that is currently there and set it to contingency.
All right.
Until the negotiations finish, yeah.
May I make a comment about Portage Development Board? I think it's their presentation. And I was particularly impressed with the, the employers they brought in, new employers and expanding, and people that were expanding. I think if we were to hire an economic development director, we would be talking probably close to six figures, maybe eighty, ninety. So, it, my thought is we should consider doing maybe even half that, say, fifty thousand for them to continue in their, with their excellent work. And I know, Kathleen, you enumerated all the in-kind, which I, I think is, for them, I know I mentioned Alyssa Berry. When they do go out, they need to emphasize that to the employers they're talking with because that represented what was a hundred thousand.
Over two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand?
Over two hundred thousand.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't recall that much, but I'm sure you're right.
Almost two-thirds of all their funding has come from the county since their inception.
Well, you know, and then they had, we had asked them to do a breakdown of, of the percentages that are coming from the private sector. I, and Brad, I thought, said it was forty percent?
Well, last year it was because last year, they only counted us for the twenty that we gave.
No, I'm talking about the breakdown of all their contributors.
Right.
How many are private sector?
Oh, percentage-wise was like sixty, in terms of numbers.
I was really.
Well, public, there's aren't that many. There's the county and the five cities.
Yeah, but when you look at their roster, if you start, to me, I thought a lot of them represented education. A lot of them, I don't know, maybe the hospitals are private. And that would be because it's UH now.
Right.
What about the Port Authority?
I don't believe they contribute.
They, ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think they did.
Or did they get that from that? That would be public.
Yeah, public. So, I'm wondering what methodology they use because I, I was really surprised that sixty percent was.
We used to get, you know, you used to get, and you didn't last year and you didn't this year, but the old reports, if you go back and look, it actually said who gave what and how much. And then.
But they, they don't do that anymore.
They don't do that anymore. And the other thing that's been missing the last two years, we used to get their cash balance, you know, report, and that hasn't come either.
They, they have a hefty reserve, but.
It's over four hundred thousand.
Well, but didn't you, didn't they say that it would sustain them for just, what, two years?
Well, that's a year worth of their operating budget, which privately isn't bad. Publicly, we tend not to like to hold.
All that being said, I still would be, I, I would like to, if it's possible for us, to do at least fifty thousand for their effort. I think they're making wonderful.
I think the board should pick a figure that it's willing to do long-term and tell them, this is, this is what we consider our due now for. And then, they can adjust and go after money to, to match that. Right now, we're in flux and it's confusing for them to know what's coming.
Again, I'm thinking if we funded an economic development department.
That was the idea, though, was this was cheaper. But yeah, fifty, fifty would still certainly be cheaper.
Well, it would.
Even seventy-five would be cheaper.
I don't wanna discount all that in-kind, and I, I think they are very remiss when they, when they gloss over that. And I, again, I like that.
Well, they, really, they gave us a beating publicly. They went around telling everyone that the county was contributing. We cut their funds, twenty thousand, they had to redo their budget and all of that. It was very frustrating for me personally since indeed, we give them housing and utilities.
Right.
And we give them a contract.
The wheel, the wheel money.
Yeah. And also two other contracts to help to offset because when we cut it, the cash donation, at the same time, we accommodated them getting income from administrative fees for these programs. And it was totally ignored. And so, and then, if we look at the list of contributions, Porch County is the largest contributor.
Even at twenties, to worry about.
Right, yeah. I agree with all of that, Kathleen, but I still think we, we should support.
And I think last year, and that did leave bad feelings because they were pretty harsh on us. And believe me, in every executive meeting, I brought that up, Kathleen. And I told them, you know, you can't take this.
That's where I.
But we need to start from where we are. And I do think Todd's got a good point. We need to say, okay, we're going to make it this figure, and this is going to be the figure. So, we don't have to negotiate this.
And I think they, again, I know I made the point, Alyssa, when they're out there talking to employers, they have got to
Right.
let them know about the in-kind.
Right.
Because it's a substantial contribution.
Sure.
And there were a couple of comments made, I think mostly positive from the board members. The only one, and I, I don't wanna single them out, maybe I will, Kevin Lewis, when he talked about, you know, you county, he's got to understand.
He's county, too.
You know what? He lives here. His family is here.
Yeah.
He works here for Porch.
We're all county.
We're all county, yeah. And I, I resented that.
Right.
So, when you talk about you coming, it's, Steve Colletti did that the first year, and he's wrong, too.
Yes.
To, to do that. It's, I know he shook his finger at me the first year and said, "You should be ashamed that you're only giving us." And I thought, wait a minute, wait a minute. You know, when you sit here and tell the sheriff you don't have enough money for patrol cars or for deputies on the road, you know, so I, I resent that. I still do to this day.
I understand that.
He changed his posture a little bit this last time.
I understand.
And good for him that he did.
Now, the other alternative is for them to pay their utilities and pay their rent.
Sure, we could do that.
And, you know, and give them just a cash gift, and they can pay, pay for what we give now as in-kind. And that way, the way they report it will be much.
Well, I'm, I'm sure they, I'm sure that would be a harsh realization, and I don't think they could afford to do that. So, again, I'd like them to acknowledge when they go out and they talk to employers, they are getting a substantial contribution. But I still feel that we should do our fifty thousand cash contribution in addition to everything else.
Do you feel that we should?
And I think that should be in the letter to them.
Hold to that figure fifty? I mean, like, okay, next year's twenty-five fifty.
I suppose.
I don't know that we can in the future decide how much will be available.
We can't commit to it, but we could indicate this would be the amount we're going to look at.
We would like to, we'd like to achieve that every year.
Yeah.
But we also want their acknowledgement that they are receiving a substantial in-kind contribution.
Because with their cash balance, you know, they. Because with their cash balance, you know, they, on their report, seventy-five made them break even. So if we only gave fifty, they would essentially need to eat into their cash balance, twenty-five. They have the cash balance to do that, and it gives them a few years to try and get those other contributions up. That's my idea behind saying, look, this is what it is, and you shouldn't be considering more. Or expect that, or whatever the case, however you want to word it.
That's very logical.
And you know, Kathleen, all the things you mentioned that came up to over two hundred thousand, I think they should be listed in a letter.
Yes, and we've asked repeatedly. And, and so, the way they, this should be irrelevant to what we decide to give. We should give based upon what we think is in the best interest of our county. But it does raise a question as to what the representation was in the community. They bad-mouthed us all over the place. And we had people come in here as a lobbying effort last week because they were told that we were not assisting them. So it was important that we point out just how much we did assist them.
Yeah. Well, I think they better change their posture.
Yeah.
They can, you know, receive that any way they want.
And I certainly don't want to promise any amount for next year or the year after, because as Todd pointed out, there may be another recession. And so, but, but we should decide for this year what we think is the right amount.
You know, actually, we didn't get to this, but my thought originally was to not fund the SBDC center and to give them that twenty, but, you know what?
Well, I, I would like to fund them ten. They're asking for twenty, I'd like to fund them ten. And I guess that has a lot to do with Alyssa's presentation regarding them, too, because, I mean, she said she certainly didn't want to take away from the funding of Portage Development Board, but she thought that the Portage Development Board and SBDC did work together somewhat, and she'd like to.
To get to that, to get to that fifty, I'm suggesting, could we take some of that from them?
I, I like the idea of giving at least ten thousand to the small business, because the service that they provide is not provided by any other organization that I know of.
Isn't it provided by N D S?
No.
Business Plan Development.
They do it for the major, what they call the large clients.
Oh, but not for the small business?
Yeah, they don't do it for the minor.
Person that wants to go in business for themselves.
And that, the, the only theme of trade, the SBDC is eligible from the Economic Development Revolver. If you would like to use that for it, Portage Development Board would not be. So what you save there, you're just saving to the revolver.
Well, we're not going to give twenty to the T I D, so we're only going to give ten to the S B, so that's thirty.
Well, with those, my zeros, I, I had already thought you were.
Oh, no.
So I have ten for the SBDC.
Okay.
Do we want it to come from the Econ Revolver?
Yeah.
Yes, that's fine.
I mean, there's, that, that fund is healthy right now. For Portage Development Board.
Fifty?
Is fifty the.
Now, that would be my, my suggestion.
Okay. Then O S U extension, we currently give them seventy-five, and seventy-five is what I can continue to budget. Seventy-five will continue to operate them as is. They had wanted that other thirty-one. I thought it odd, they want the thirty-one for the office assistant, which would let them open more hours. But then their other complaint was for this A, A N R educator, they have to go to other counties, and they didn't think that was fair. So my, my advice would be if you go the extra thirty-one, specify you want the A N R, not the extra hours, but that's, again, that's your.
What would equip them so that they could get that match?
That's the A N R.
Oh.
The A N R, if we give money for the A N R educator, then the state provides the balance, which, I'm part-time, I'm not sure.
But they could do that with the money we do give them. We give them seventy-five thousand, they could designate that to the, to the egg and get a leverage. And when we talked to them that day, they agreed they could do that.
What if we gave them the seventy-five, what's that, thirty? Oh, my gosh, how much would that be?
Hundred and six.
Hundred and.
I'm sorry.
Hundred and the six, yeah.
Well, no, I control myself. No, is there anything additionally we could give them? You know, of anyone's presentation, I thought they did, they made the best presentation, they had all the facts and figures.
The problem is that we don't have unlimited funds.
No, I know we don't have unlimited, but I'm still thinking.
I had ninety written down for them, but I'm.
How much is ninety?
I think we've given them seventy-five for a number of years.
Well, that would give them additional.
And when we had our discussion with them, if they use some of the seventy-five for the A R D, as it calls.
A N, A N R, yeah.
Well, that would only be fifteen thousand more.
Well, you've, just in the, just in these other three pages, you've increased two hundred and fifty thousand.
Agreed, but.
The Portage Development Board would be another fifty, so that we're at three hundred. A, a hundred can come from the health benefits, that was overestimated. So you are going to make trade-offs somewhere for these additional costs.
Right, and we're going to have more carryover, too, though.
We can work.
Yes.
I don't, I would not expect additional certification in January.
Oh. That's going to hammer us.
And what, our certification for January is forty-two, is it?
Yeah, forty-two is what the tax budget was, they have forty-two million. And we did not, we did not get additional this year, which, again, we kind of changed how we prepared the tax budget and said, you know, we're upfront, so.
Well, ask you everything.
So the, we, I would, I would suggest that we have to work with what we have right now, and then if extra does come, yay, but don't, don't give away planning on the extra.
No, all right, you're right, you're right. Are you negating everything that we're getting?
I just, I'm just saying, you know, typically what happens is, and it happened before, we give to labor at the expense of the capital. We do have a healthy carryover. One of the reasons, though, we build it up, you know, the big project a year and a half ago, we mentioned, is jail addition. And I've been trying to squirrel away so we could pay cash for it. Now that we have the other funds, that does mean we have a little bit of extra, but you also have, you know, the doors at the jail, the air conditioner at the jail, the boilers at the jail. There was over two million that I just said right there. You have the Ravenna Courthouse that is in desperate need of some, some big items. You have this building, we talked about remodeling the eighth floor, that came at a hundred, eight hundred thousand, just to remodel it. I'm assuming the Board of Elections is going to come in at at least five hundred thousand to remodel that. You have your.
Jeez, Todd.
Your annex building, which, Vicky, we went through it. So we do have a lot of money, but we don't, it's.
We do, but we don't.
We've got stacks of stuff, and I, I always, again, you're, you're being very fair, I believe, but one of the problems with giving it to labor is it's never, it's never back elsewhere. It's that, that money that keeps going year after year to that source. So we had a healthy capital budget planned for it, to take a little bit from it, would not be detrimental, but, again, you want to just discipline that you don't always do that at the expense of capital.
Well, can we do that for these?
I think we're okay so far.
With what we've said?
Yeah.
I think we're okay.
Well, we have to decide what we said for the O S U extension, is it seventy-five?
We haven't gotten an answer, I. Seventy-five is where it was, do you want to add to that or not? Seventy, seventy-five will keep them operating as they are.
I think, and then they could get a little extra leverage if they would designate that money for the egg person.
I, I'm still inclined to give them more, but, Vicky, I think you need to.
If they designate, when you say if they designate more money, if, if we're just going to give them enough to operate as they are, where are they going to get that extra money to designate, I guess, I?
And what they're, it has to do with the state matching money.
Yeah.
The state will not, they used to match everything we gave, but now they don't. So they have not directed the money we gave to those areas that can be matched. And they were saying when we met this time, as I suggested, they match it that way. And then, and they acknowledged that, yes, they could get more from the state if they get that.
But they still need more money, I mean.
Everyone needs more money.
Well, yes, I agree with you, but are we going to do it or not? And you're saying, if we did those things, we still would be okay with the guessing.
So far, we're.
We're all right?
We're not going to.
Okay, I said ninety for the O S U, how about eighty-five? Would that be tolerable to everybody or not? You know, Kathleen, I understand what you're saying, but I guess there's a part of it I don't understand, because if we give them seventy-five, if they put some money that they're using for something else to be matched, isn't this other money? Well, that's what I'm, so, I'm losing something here, I know what you're saying would be matched.
Okay, I'll try again, maybe I'm not really very good at explaining this, but for instance, if you have seventy-five thousand and you designate.
What did they do with the seventy-five thousand last year that we gave them?
They put it in areas that did not get a match.
Okay.
So if they take some of that money and put it in areas that will match, the state will give them more money. So our seventy-five thousand will leverage a little more, I don't know how much more.
But what about those areas that they put last year?
They have a huge budget, they have a huge budget, so they would use other money to pay for those things that they have to pay for, that.
Well, I don't think they have a huge budget.
They, well, I don't know what you call a huge budget.
Well, you're right, you're right.
How much is their final bottom line there?
They only showed the seventy-five, I believe, on that.
No, well, they have.
I think they need the money. Of course, everyone has seen.
I just feel that we have so many capital needs that we've not covered for so long. We've turned down people for races that are deserving. So we have to really be careful with our budget. I know it's fun to give, and.
What did you say, it's fun?
Yeah, it is.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not looking at this as a game or fun, I'm looking at it as essential to keep.
Let me take back the word fun, it's rewarding to be able to support good agencies. But there's a limit to what, the money that we have, and we've raised taxes twice this year.
Which may not have been essential.
Well, it is essential.
Well, that is yet to play out. Oh, Todd. Well, are you reading on that?
So far, just with this, this packet, we've given away an additional three hundred thousand. And so I think we have to be really careful. That's my point.
Okay, so, this is, Kathleen, what do you want to do?
Well, I'm going back to eighty-five or ninety, I mean, it looks like we've got three different opinions here, so I don't know what we do when we have three different opinions.
I've got a seventy-five, a one oh six, and an idea.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying one oh, I'm not saying one oh six.
What about eighty? Does that make sense?
When I was, when I said ninety, I was splitting the thirty-one, kind of, I was splitting the thirties, what I was doing, giving them fifteen more.
That's, that's. Can we give them the fifteen more?
That's, that's what I originally said, the ninety.
So do you want to stay with that or not?
I'll stay with ninety.
That'll be fine with me.
Are we going to indicate that you would like a portion specifically for the A N R educator? Is that the fifteen at least?
Yes, definitely.
Not, not the off, so they, they won't stay open extra hours?
Right.
But they'll have this person to answer those questions.
That's what I was matching, right.
Correct, so your fifteen will turn into more through the state.
Which I think is good.
So the only other one we need to decide is R P C.
I thought we did decide for R P C.
There was a mention of twenty-two, that's what I have written down, but there wasn't a clear.
I thought we did fifty-five for.
Vicky brought up twenty-two because we had, they had the extra.
We had the thirty-three that they're going in with, and when I said twenty-two, that was fifty-five. That's where that, that's where that fifty-five came from.
The first question is, do you want that grant writer to be full-time now? Or do you want to wait to see the results?
Yeah.
If you want them full-time, then they need sixty-seven for the whole year, we're assuming they're carrying over around thirty.
What, maybe then, what we should do is, you know, I know you said last, yesterday, Todd, that we could leave it open to give them more, depending on what the grant writer does.
Well, that, yeah, there's, there's a lot of ways to give them their money.
Yeah.
You know, last year, we just gave them forty. The one option, I don't think it's cumbersome, but, you know, N D S turns in time sheets for their, for their payments.
I'm sure R P C.
And then, and then, you know, if they did get admin dollars, that would be netted off of that, that time request. The other way is to give them a flat amount, but then, whatever admin they earn, we take it off of what we give next year. So there's ways to net that off.
We had this discussion, the admin does not necessarily go to them.
Well, that's what, I mean, they would report that, what went to them versus what was passed on elsewhere.
I talked to Todd last night, and he seemed to think sixty would be the least that they could pay a full-time grant writer. And I was thinking fifty-five, but maybe if we.
And the other, the other caveat I'll throw out is that, does the county want to employ that?
No.
Directly?
No. No, I, I don't, I want to, I want them to have a full-time effort. I, I, I think what we're missing not doing that.
Right.
So if we give them, they're getting forty now, right?
Well, they got forty last year, but they didn't spend all of.
Carrying forward, right?
So thirty-ish, yeah, thirty.
So if we give them, add five more thousand on to that, if we give them twenty-seven, that would be sixty. And then, like you say, Todd, maybe have them do the time sheets, and if they get admin charges, then we can kind of play with that throughout the year.
But those, that admin is going to, you know, I'm confident they're going to pass that on to those other entities, like the time shifts.
That's what I'm, yeah, exactly.
Well, some of them.
But we're talking sixty thousand for them.
It depends on how the grant goes.
And then if they get, if they get admin for themselves, and we subtract it, if they don't get admin for themselves, we don't, right?
That would be the idea.
So they.
Well, I, yeah, I'm, you know.
The original idea of the grant writer was to hopefully have it get enough, not every grant does have admin, but that it wouldn't, we wouldn't always be paying the full salary, there would be some.
Could they count on fifty-five, say fifty-five thousand from the county contribution?
Well, I had said sixty unless, that's what Todd said last night, he needed sixty.
Including all this computation, I mean.
Well, if they.
Well, the question, there's. They need sixty to fund the person for this year.
Yeah, okay.
There's a question as to whether they already spent the forty we gave them, or whether they're rolling some of that forty over. If you look at just the, what they've paid to this grant writer, they have not spent the full forty. So then the question is, do we take that off of this sixty that they need and say something like they only need twenty-seven? Or do you want to just consider that that forty's done and dealt with and give them sixty now? That's the debate that I'm hearing is.
I want to give them enough that they can have a full-time effort.
Right.
However you slice or dice it, you know, I.
But if they're carrying over in the thirties, that's what we're saying, Maury, and give them sixty thousand dollars.
All right.
Because that's what Todd said, he would need for full-time, but if you're carrying over thirty, then you just add whatever you need to add.
But that's a big but or if, I mean, are they, or are they not?
Well, they didn't spend forty thousand dollars on a grant writer this year, Maury, they just hired him.
They spent seven thousand.
But they did spend more than they brought in, even with the forty.
That's because we didn't have a, a grant writer until just a month.
No, I'm saying, R P C.
Oh.
Spent more money than they brought in.
Totally.
Yes, last year.
So how does that happen?
So, well, how much are they?
They had other, other expenses. They said their balance dropped, their cash balance.
Yesterday, you were there, you were there, and I think they, their financials, I didn't hear them say, we're going to spend more than we have.
I don't have their sheet, I've got it in my office.
Yeah, I think I've probably got it.
So their, their contention is they, they aren't carrying over a lot.
No.
And again, if you took the salary of what they've paid to the person they just hired, they definitely have some carryover. If you just look at all their financials.
Yeah. When we gave them the forty.
They broke even at best.
When we gave them the forty, it was earmarked, correct?
We did not put any specification in the letter, although the board verbally made it clear that that was for a grant writer.
So where are we?
I think the question is, do you want to do twenty-seven extra, assuming that lets them hire full-time because they should have carryover? Or do you want to do sixty? them hire full-time because they should have carryover, or do you want to do sixty? That's, that's where the debate is.
You had a conversation with Todd. What, you, the accountant, what, what were your-
Well, I, I thought they were carrying over money from the grant writer. Now, he didn't give me a figure, but I told him that you thought it was thirty-three.
The, they gave us, did you keep it yesterday, Kathleen?
No, I wasn't.
They gave us a sheet, a time sheet.
Yeah. What is their number in here?
Accounting for, they're not in that book. There was a separate sheet. But they, they gave it when they came in. Everybody had it. That showed what they considered. Oh, here it is right here. According to their calculations, they spent eighteen thousand three hundred on grant writing activities. But the majority of that was Todd and, was it Evelyn? I always forget her name.
Lisa.
Lisa, I'm sorry. When we asked, they said they'd only really paid about seven thousand to the new grant writing person. If you took that seven thousand and added in the two months for the rest of the year, that would bring around ten thousand that they are actually paying the grant writer themselves. So if what we gave was forty thousand for grant writer's salary, then they've only spent ten of it.
So that's thirty.
In which case, then, from our standpoint, they have thirty that we had already set aside for that position. Another thirty would be able to make it full-time.
So we're going to make sixty.
If you look at their overall accounting, they, we'll say broke even, even with the forty, meaning they sort of did already spend it within all their other expenditure groups. So it's, it's a matter of perception, not of fact. In other words, you can account for it either way. The question is, how do you want to account for it? What do you want to give?
I think for next year, we need a contract with them which spells out exactly how the money is to be used, and spells out that if there's grant money for administrative costs that go back to them, that that would be subtracted from the amount.
I'm not willing to do that because they, I think, are going to give that admin, and he explained that when he was in here, the admin.
They're not taking any admin, is that what you're saying, Maureen?
Well, they may. It depends on-
Well, they, which, they may, but, but they're also going to pass it on to the entity that supplies for the grant.
So if they take it, they're going to pass it on, even if they take it?
Well, the contract that we would have would say if they don't keep it, they don't subtract, we don't subtract it.
But I don't want to purchase in a sense of being punitive.
Oh, not punitive.
Well, no, well, I'm just saying that. I don't want to do it that way. I think they're making tremendous strides, and I think I'd like us to be able to support them, to have a full-time grants person.
Well, that's what I've said, a full-time grant.
Okay, so it shakes out to how many dollars?
Well, I guess it depends again on-
It depends on how you account. Either, either it's thirty because they already have thirty of our money.
You know, should we call Todd Peets?
Yeah, I was just, yes, right.
Why don't we call Todd Peets?
I'm not calling.
Because we need, we need, this is the only thing that we've got left to decide on.
On the TID, are we at zero dollars?
Right.
On the what?
The TID.
Zero.
Oh, yeah, we're not doing, I'm not inclined to, no, to give them anything.
My only thought on that was, given the makeup of the board, we don't want it to look like we abandoned them.
Well, see, I thought we were all in the-
No, I, not initially, yeah. When they first stepped in here, I said, the county is not in position to give you any monetary contribution.
Now, are we looking at in-kind services, or we want to stay away from that as well?
Yeah. But, you know, the problem is that when they came to us in the beginning, they said it's a way for us to gain money for the county, and there was never a discussion about any contribution, but certainly in-kind, we can count, I would think.
Because there's a meeting in January that they're going to prepare this agreement.
But they, we appointed a board, and the board is independent from us, and we have no say over it. Under the guidance of Mr. Darwish, he decided that they're going to write a contract that bills us for some money. He never discussed it with us, nothing.
I agree.
So I think in-kind is always a possibility.
Okay. So, yeah, we're down to-
But not a monetary, not a twenty.
So why don't you have Amy come in here and call Todd and have a conference call, so we know if we're on the same page?
I thought we were.
Well, I think we want to fund a full-time grant writer.
Amy?
I think the problem comes in, is there, I mean, to me, it's a little-
Oh, I'm sorry.
There she is.
Can you dial up?
Todd Peets?
Todd Peets, so we can-
Yeah. Do you want him on the speakerphone?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, that's that thing. It was, I'm sorry.
And Todd, you tell him what your understanding is, and then maybe he can-
Yeah, right.
Mike can't take any more of this.
The number you have dialed is not in service. Please check the number and try your call again.
How many times have I heard that? So I don't know. I wonder how long it's going to be before we can just dial four digits to get people outside our floor.
Well, everybody on the admin building has their phones right now, so you can four-digit dial.
But for if I want to call, I guess we still have to go out.
For the, for, no other building has them yet.
Can I call you in four digits?
Yes.
Because I was told it was three six one three.
No, you can. Yeah, it's just, I have two phones on my desk right now. And when you call four-digit, my black phone reads. When you call ten-digit, my white phone reads. That's Marine.
Port County Regional Planning.
Hi, Todd.
Hey, Kathleen, how you doing?
Fine. We're in session, and Marine has a question for you.
Uh-oh, okay.
No, I don't have a question.
Vicky has a question for you.
Todd, the question is, we gave forty thousand dollars for a grant writer last year. You just hired them not too long ago. We're under the assumption that you've paid them like ten thousand dollars, or will pay them by the end of the year, so there's thirty thousand of that money still carried over next year for a grant writer, and we were thinking of adding thirty to that to make it a full-time grant writer for sixty. Does that make sense to you?
No, no, it doesn't make sense at all. So we, we still, you, you gave us the money back in, I think it was March, April, May, somewhere in that timeframe. We hired the grant writer in October. But we did spend a lot of time writing different grants and researching grants and doing grant-related things. So where we're at, and when we met with you back in November, because we hired the grant writer, we still had money left over, but it wasn't thirty, it was fifteen. We estimated about fifteen thousand would be left over from what you gave us out of that forty. And then we were saying that at a minimum, it would be seventy-five for a full-time writer. You gave us forty last year. We were hoping for forty again this year to keep that part, at least a part-time spot. But if we wanted to go with the full-time, we were saying if we went to fifteen, you know, fifty-five thousand plus the fifteen that we have left over, that would, that would give us our, that would give us seventy thousand. So I guess we're, you know, right really close to the full-time position.
I completely missed the vote on that. So when you spent money on grant writing before you had a grant writer, does that mean next year when you have a grant writer, then, I mean, I, I guess, have we been doing that in the years? I don't know. Have we been paying for grant writing?
No.
No. No, you have, no, you, this is the first year that you guys gave us, you know, forty thousand dollars to vote towards grant writing and hire a grant writer.
So of the money that was spent on grant writing that did not go to the grant writer, what, what was that? Was that your-
Well, probably one of the bigger grants that we wrote that, that we, you know, that we typically wouldn't have written last year was when we spent quite a bit of time writing a grant for EMA, to, for a grant that they had for emergency, you know, emergency announcement services and that kind of thing. So that was, that was an example. We were looking at grants for Mickey's office, for example, and we've been looking for other grants throughout the county, depending on what their needs are.
Right. Were those outside services though, or was that?
Um-
Where, what was the money spent on, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Well, we provided, at the, at the meeting in November, we provided a list of our hours or the hours spent on different grants.
So it's overtime?
So I can provide that again if you need it.
No, I have that in front of me. I guess, like, you spent seventy-eight hours on the EMA grant.
Okay.
Was that overtime above and beyond what you normally would have done? Or was that hours that would not have been charged then to your other?
We would not, and we did not charge that, we did not charge that against like the TA hours for, you know, what those commissioners get for their dues. So we, we use that as part of what we would, you know, as part of that forty thousand dollars. That's where that, you know, came from. That seventy-eight hours came from that. And it's just like other grants that we wrote, we just charged to grant, to grant time and offset that with the forty thousand dollars until we finally have a full, you know, a part-time person, excuse me, here currently.
So how much money do you need now for a full-time grant writer?
Well, from what we discussed in November, we were saying that we'd have fifteen thousand left over from the forty this year, you know, even with the part-time person. And then we were saying that if we, and if we got forty thousand again for a part-time person, great. If we added fifteen to that, with the other fifteen that we saved or didn't use, that would get, that would get us up to seventy thousand, and we would go with that. Also, in November, we said that we would be hoping to get a full-time position for next year, two thousand seventeen. And then after that point, and we, we would reevaluate at the end of this, at the end of sixteen anyway, to see where we're at. You know, it would be a reevaluation to see if we're making progress and all that kind of stuff. But the idea was that once we started getting projects in and getting projects that included admin, because not all projects include admin, or, or had, or had projects that included, you know, work that we could be a part of, that maybe we could start reducing that down and then eventually phase out the commissioner's responsibility for paying for a grant writer. But we just need to try to establish that over the, over the first few years and then go from there.
All right. So the seventy thousand would be a salary of a full-time grant writer?
Right. And that salary, that seventy is, would include benefits and things like that. So it's not, we're not paying seventy, seventy thousand. We're paying them. We're paying them what we can pay them and then factor in the benefits to go with that.
Okay, so you're needing fifty-five additional from the county?
Well, no. Yes and no. And again, we, we were hoping for another forty to maintain the part-time position. So if we want to go from the part-time position, it would be an additional fifteen or fifty-five this year. It could be as high, you know, and that's, we're just worried about this year. So fifty, it would be fifty-five this year to allow us to go to full-time.
What, what is this year?
We're worried about next year, next year.
That's sixteen.
Two thousand and sixteen, you need, you need fifty-five thousand for it to be full-time?
Right.
Okay, so can we agree on that? To give them? Hello? Wow.
Thanks, Todd. We wanted some clarification about what the request was. So, thanks. We'll be discussing it and making a decision.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
I don't know how to hang up.
He hung up, so I think it's hung up.
Okay, so yesterday, we discussed giving them twenty-two more to bring it up to fifty-five. And then today, we said we'll give them another five to bring it up to sixty thousand. But where, where we're missing is what they've got left over from that forty. I mean, that's-
Well, it's, again, it's, that's how you account for it, yeah.
They're claiming they only have fifteen thousand left.
Yes.
So they need fifty-five for a full-time grant writer, plus the fifteen.
For two thousand and sixteen?
Right.
Okay, so are we going to do that or not?
Well, why don't we set that aside and then have them do what NDS does, do the time sheets. And like Todd said, if any administration fees that they take in, which they won't be taking, I guess some grants have no admin fees, and some grant, they give the admin fees to somebody else. But Todd just said that they would keep track of those admin fees that they take in, and I think that'd be a good idea. Then we could subtract that from that. All right, that's what he just said. That is what he just said, Maureen. That's, that's what he just said. He said if there's admin fees that they get, they can, we can subtract it away from that. But they don't always get admin.
Well, he also said that eventually they'd be self-sustaining.
Right, the couple of years.
Hope, yes, yeah.
So what are we going to?
Maureen, I just said, they've got fifteen left over. Give them another fifty-five. That means seventy. If they get admin fees, take them away from it, just like Todd said.
All right, okay.
Excuse me?
Yes.
You guys needed an executive session later today?
Susan.
Susan, just Susan. You don't need like Janet or anything else? Janet, COVID?
Susan, who?
Benefits.
Oh.
But, yeah, you do. Yeah, you do.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because Janet has to go to a meeting, so.
Okay, I don't think we would have to have Janet, would we?
We don't have to have Janet, no.
I don't think so. I think Susan would be good enough.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, let me recoup what we think we've decided. For, we're going to put the-
APL away for right now?
APL in contingency. For Portage Development Board, it was fifty thousand.
Right.
For, for RPC, fifty-five thousand. For the Small Business Development Center, ten thousand. Nothing for TID.
Any O S U extension? Did we decide on that?
I have ninety.
Ninety, okay.
That's what I have.
Okay.
So we have spent well over four hundred thousand, just looking at four pages, right?
It was three hundred to the Portage Development Board, another fifteen, seventy, eighty, so, yeah.
About four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Which means we have to subtract four hundred thousand from our capital budget.
A hundred will come from health benefits, but yeah, the other-
Oh, right, three hundred from the-
The other three hundred, actually, will come out.
I'm willing to do that.
What Todd just said, you know, hopefully in two to three years, they can get that grant writing up to where they won't need that money.
Yes, we hope.
Yeah.
That would be nice. Okay, do we, dare talk about the land for the park?
I'm not sure what land they're wanting.
I don't know the proposal.
They want the Brady, they sent a letter. They want the Brady Lake Water Treatment Plant land. Jeff had come to you one day, this was maybe a month ago, and specified that they really don't need it. They lease it to the park currently for a dollar. The park needs ownership of it in order to actually begin making improvements. They can't do anything with the property.
And Jeff was okay with it?
And Jeff, Jeff was okay with that. You're welcome to contact him again.
Was there another parcel, or you just sent?
That's the only parcel that they want, and they, they want it in kind.
When did they send the letter? The park wanted?
I think we've had it for a month.
I don't recall seeing it.
I, it probably came beginning of November, because it was right around the time with the Hiram, the Hiram Bike Trail, they kind of came in around the same time.
I have to go to another meeting.
Okay. All right, so are we, I don't know where to read it.
Of the land?
Of the children's advocacy.
Yeah. I have no objection to selling it to them for a dollar.
Okay, all right.
I can email Jeff to get back with you guys regarding that transfer.
And I would love to get a copy of the letter, because when I saw someone from the park board last night, I thought there was two parcels.
The one property may be made up of two parcels. That could be the case. Does that make sense?
So you're leaving?
Yes.
And one-thirty, we start again?
All right.
So you need time for lunch, too? Oh, yes. Yes, I do. But can we then, when we convene, meet with Susan and executive session?
Oh, yes, yeah, okay.
And then, again, if the board would remember, we need to do the budget amendments before you convene. Adjourn, I mean, today.
Today?
Yes.
You're going to bring those later?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So if they're ready to adjourn, and I haven't come up calling.
So we'll recess now for lunch?
Absolutely.
So how much is that going to leave our capital budget if we take three hundred thousand?
One million three hundred thousand. The bulk of that, though, is the voter equipment, and then the cars. And there's a set of boilers at the Justice Center that are desperate need a replacement. They were like three hundred thousand. So mine and the cars is one point two. Basically, you'll get those three things done and nothing else.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, this was, Deb copied this for you guys. I'll leave this one, Kathleen, but if you want copies.
Oh, that's the letter.
That's the letter, yeah.
Oh, that's the letter, okay. All right, we'll recess till lunch.
Just to make, I mean, Maureen, you too, you asked like Jim Greener to be your alternate for MF. Are you still okay with all your alternates? And we'll confirm over the holidays.
Well, you know, we go, so.
I'm okay.
Okay, all right, so we'll do that. Okay, all right, so we'll do that. That's all I want to make sure. And then, I know, and then I gave you the pending list. I know you're not going to go over it today, but there it is, just in case.
You know, I was using the wrong agenda this morning.
You thought you had a light day?
Yeah, no, right, I did, I thought...
Oh, you have plenty of time.
Okay, so what are we doing now?
Resolution. Let me grab my packet, just a minute.
Okay, are we ready for this? I make a motion to accept the grant award from the 2015-16 Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grant, DARE, on behalf of the Portage County Sheriff. This would be grant number 2015-DUP-1567-1067.
Any further discussion on the DARE grant? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to accept the donations to the Office of the Portage County Dog Ward, second.
Any further discussion? No, if they would please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. And before you move on, you've got a lot of these coming up, so the board has to sign all of them. We thought maybe we would do a generic letter, have you sign once?
That'd be great.
Yeah. Hopefully, these will continue to come in. Dave sent these out with his notices.
How nice, it was a very generous contribution.
Boy, I'll say, you, we are going to get them.
They're all in here for you. You've got like 40 of them to sign, and there's more coming, hopefully.
Okay, discussion items for Mr. Marazzi regarding the Portage County DID?
And that meeting has been moved to January 11.
Right, 11?
It's organizational day for the board.
Oh, that's right.
Number two, Kathleen, you have to put that back on, the CCAO solar program.
Yeah, um, and the solar participation program. It's my understanding that the CCAO pays for the initial assessment as to whether it is a viable project. If it's not a viable project, we end it. If it is a viable project, then, if I'm understanding it correctly, we would pay 2,000 for each site that we want to pursue, with, only with a maximum of 5,000 if we had more than two sites. So if it's, if the potential is there to save money on our electricity, it might be worthwhile, but I would like to have Deb confirm my impressions, be absolutely sure.
That's exactly right.
That's right, okay.
Palmer Energy has already done most of the preliminary evaluation.
So we need to hear from them before we decide whether or not to go on forward.
From Palmer?
Yeah, from Palmer.
You have heard from them.
What did they say?
They, they were here and they told you that your programs, the water resources, the sewer...
See, I was, must have been absent that day.
I don't know if Palmer Energy was here.
But is this 5,000 upfront, I mean, to retain them?
Yes, pretty much, I mean...
That he would go towards the cost?
Towards the project, yes, towards the project, should you continue to move forward.
No, to me, um, well, any savings is good. What I relate more to is the fact that we still have like 70 million dollars in debt as a result of the Johnson Control coming in. Now, I realize this is what solar energy, but then coming in and, um, previous board decided that we would contract with them, and they did the analysis of the energy savings, and that's what they're supposedly doing on a yearly basis. I'm not even aware. I don't know as though we've had reports, or maybe we should...
Well, according to Joanne, we wouldn't get a report until the end of this year.
This year?
Yeah, because once it's installed, then it takes a year to determine what the savings would actually be.
Well, I know this...
But that's for all of our other buildings.
Sure.
This solar thing would be like for those 24-hour...
Facilities.
365-day-a-year facility, and if there's some way we could save money on the electricity for the jail, water resources are a big user of electricity. If the hospital would join in, that might...
He says it's a separate...
And if the hospital, if they were interested?
He's going to contact, not you. He's going to call Mr. Zenti, right.
But that wouldn't be under our purview, anyway.
He wouldn't be part of your program, no.
So the one, we would only probably have one site, because that one site would be out near where the airport property is. It'd be between Water Resources and the jail, the sheriff's office.
Right, and the Dog Ward could share, but you also have your wastewater treatment plant in Streetsboro, which is a huge, huge, huge water plant.
So that would be another one that we might be interested in.
Water plant on Coit Road.
But we wouldn't move forward unless there was evidence that it would be costing...
Prelimarily, they think that there would be. So then the discussion would then be about the array itself. I think you were here, Kathleen, that you asked me...
What I would wonder, though, is, again, I'm making the comparison of Johnson Control, as to then the consequence, well, what happens at the end, then? If they say, yes, these projects or these facilities would be very worthy projects for solar energy, then who pays for...
The Johnson?
All of it. Do we go, I would just hate to see us go to bond again. I mean, I, first of all, we, we would not be able to because of our debt limit, but I, I wouldn't want it to end in that. Well, these are the savings.
We would have to end in that, wouldn't it?
Well, yes, I would think, I, I don't know as though they're...
Well, we would not move forward if there was any indication at all that it wouldn't save us money, enough money to cover whatever costs there would be. Solar energy has become much more efficient now, mainly because the costs have dropped. It used to be so expensive that we wouldn't consider it, but now it's much more...
Would you, would you want Palmer to come back in and talk to you one more time, or no?
Sure, you want to do that, have him come.
Before, and send us to Denise, have her look at it, and ask them...
Yeah, start with Denise and ask her to look at the contract.
And then maybe schedule Palmer for next week?
She's going to say, boy, is this similar to Johnson Control?
Oh, my God, I don't think it can be similar. That was a $7 million contract, and furthermore, the person overseeing it is the person who's providing the service.
The ones that monitor it are the ones that are...
So I wouldn't even consider supporting anything near like that contract.
And you know what, I didn't, I didn't support it either. Yeah.
D3, you handled last week, you reported to Joanne to make some of those items listed on that letter happen?
Oh, yes, okay. This was her concerns, and I think it was Tuesday, when we briefly talked about this, Amy Cooper evidently was not aware that any of those changes were going to be...
She wasn't asked for her...
She wasn't asked, yes.
Right, she knew it was happening, of course.
But she should have been, right.
And you know, also, that Room 111 that we're going to be giving to Board of Elections, right?
Yes.
Well, you have an email from Kelly Jo. There's a request from the Board of Elections farther on down the agenda, asking for room, yeah, okay. Okay, D4 is a recommendation from Joel Mallory for appointments to this new committee. It's the Regional Prevention Council. I did forward it to Kelly Jo. Kelly Jo Jeffrey's confirmed that Tammy Devine would be a good choice to sit on the committee if the board would like to appoint her. I don't know if you know Sarah McCully?
I don't know her, but I read, you know, Joel's recommendation.
So if you are ready to move forward, I can get a resolution ready for Tuesday, or you can do it today, whichever you prefer.
Why don't you get it ready for Tuesday? By that time, we'll be able to hear from Kelly Jo.
She already told you it was okay. Yeah, there's an email, I gave it to you this morning, and your additional information for emails right there. Okay, so I'll bring that back.
We have two from Joel Mallory, don't we?
Yeah, the second one was his, the stepping up initiative, just the draft application that each of you saw.
Oh, okay.
I don't think you need any action for that, it was just information.
We don't need any action?
You rated your resolution, authorizing the application, Vicky's going to be one of the people going.
Is there, are you ready to...
There's no action.
Oh, okay, I thought we were doing a letter of support or a resolution.
No, you already did that.
Oh, scuse the scooze.
So D6 is the request from the Board of Elections for the month-long use of Room 111. So in your packet, though, the one that says additional information for discussion items looks like this, I emailed it to you this morning. If you look at Kelly Jo's email, it's, says D6 on it, here's on the packet, if you have it. You have it? So you look at the one that says D6. Kelly just wanted to be sure that you knew that about 800 people are scheduled every month to go through their orientation and their jobs' orientations. So her recommendation is that for that month, she go out and look for some outside space in a church or whatever, but if you're giving a Room 111 away...
You know, there's a, there's a hall right up here that has, I think, adequate parking, right on, is it Spruce?
Is it Immaculate, their hall?
Yes, yeah, maybe they would rent that. Is that all right?
Yeah, well, she's going to look, but she wanted you to know that, that it does, they have a lot of their meetings in there, so if you're going to give that away permanently, she's going to have to find some space for all of her meetings.
And I think that we did a tour of her floors, and there's a lot of space in Johnson Family Services not being utilized.
She needs room for 40 people, that the, it's 40 people that come to the orientation.
So we should probably try to figure out where, where we can have space within her own floors, I think.
Not the parish hall, I mean...
Well, I think for now, she, you know, it's only a couple of months from now, she's got to get it on the books, probably.
Okay.
Is this going to happen immediately with the Board of Elections?
Just for this election, I think.
Okay. I think we're going to have that space...
Pretty quickly?
Yeah. That was my understanding. Maureen, was that your understanding? The Board of Elections was going to have that additional space?
Oh, yeah.
Beginning...
From now on, right?
Right, right.
Oh, so this, this is really a moot point, then, it's not February, it's beginning, you mean?
It would be ongoing. There's no way that we're going to, unless we're prepared to find the Board of Elections' facility outside this building, I think we're going to...
I think you're correct, but I think we need to have someone look at her floors, because there's a lot of space that she has. They're smaller, maybe, than what she needs, but we can maybe reconfigure something.
Knock a wall down or something, is what you're thinking?
Yeah, something.
Okay, so are you saying that...
Immediately, she's going to have to have something.
Yeah, there's just so much wasted space in the hallways because of hospital beds from the issues to the hospital.
Okay, so I'll have Kelly Jo, so what is the, any beginning ASAP, like, at the meeting, right? Okay, all right.
So temporarily, she's going to have to have someplace else till we figure out what we're going to have.
The next is something that's come back to us a couple of times now, the appointments for the Oversight Committee for the Sales and Use Tax. This came up Tuesday, we briefly talked about it. On the Citizens Representatives, I do have a slight concern. We have one staff member who was asked to be appointed, and I think I just have a bit of a reservation about having a staff person, although he was on the task force, and he quite a bit, very worthy contribution, but, and of the Citizens Representatives, what's noticeably missing there is a woman.
Oh, you did, the one more.
I would almost...
You have Ann Kazimak, was that her name? She sent her...
Oh, yes, no, right.
Right, so there's one that you did not point?
A lady that applied.
But weren't two of the people applied from the Tea Party?
Right, and that's why we didn't nominate her.
Well, I think one from the Tea Party is appropriate, certainly.
Well, if the, they have the interest, no matter what party they represent, but it just depends on my, I'd like to see at least one lady serve.
We have two women on the committee.
Well, two out of the rest, that's not that, we've got one.
Three, counting you. There's you and Judge Barbara and Susan White.
Well, again, my reservation is, we have Todd, of course, who, Budget and Finance, that should be on there, but I just thought, for the, I'll use the word purity of it all, that we should not have staff.
Do you think Bill would seem, be deemed as biased or something?
No, 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 I'm just saying, I think it's Sales and Use Tax, and to have our own staff, I just think may be a mis, whatever, not perceived well by the general public. I'd almost like us to see if there's just anyone else that...
Do you want to open it up again?
I'm happy if there is.
Well, I'm not...
Do you want to advertise? Is that what you want to do, again?
There's no one else, no, no woman that is applying?
You have five people who applied.
Would you be amenable to interviewing the other lady that applied, or not?
I just think we'd have one representative from the Tea Party that we should have a broader base.
I don't really know any of these. I mean, Carl, I know, did a lot of work for us, but I don't know any of the...
Well, Carl did. Actually, Christopher, you know.
Oh, yeah, he's the tow guy, right?
Yeah, yes, yes, he has, is it Interstate?
Gateway, yeah.
Streetsboro?
Gateway.
Oh, yes, Gateway, I'm sorry, Gateway Interstate, Gateway. He had certainly an interesting perspective about all the, all the accidents that he has to tow away of people that are intoxicated, or I should say, on drugs when they crash.
You know, I, I understand what you're saying about being staff, but I don't think he's going to be reporting to us or anything, and he did submit some spreadsheets and stuff when he was on the task force. I mean, he did contribute, I don't think he would be, but I mean, I'm, I'm open if you want to...
I'd just like to try one more time to see if we could attract a...
A female?
A female.
Do you want to appoint all of these so the committee's in place, or do you want to wait until you have that last appointment?
It's your pleasure, could well, either rest of them?
You should wait, okay.
Appoint everybody but the Citizens at large, I mean?
That's up to you, yeah.
Just wait.
Yeah, you don't have to meet until you start collecting.
Okay.
So you've got a little bit of time.
Okay.
Your next appointments are next.
We may have an interesting person right here.
For, that's good for the previous. Because, like, I'm a little interested in the previous, the more you talk.
This has to do with Oversight concerning the use of the Sales and Use Tax that we have imposed to be used for the jail and addictive services, things like that.
To me, on a variety of things like improvements of the jail.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So... Would you be interested?
I would be.
You would be?
I would, yeah. I stuck in the top, to her about it, it was about two years ago, about how can I, if there's any way to get involved, because my generation is absolutely in need.
Yeah, no, that's good. Would it be all right?
Could we do that?
Give her some information, and then let you digest that?
Absolutely.
And if you would apply for it, then we...
Sure, yeah, that'd be great. See if Paige is going to come to these meetings.
Do you want me to come back, Maureen? Do you want to take Susan first?
Okay, all right.
Do you want me to come back, Maureen, and you want to take Susan first?
Sure.
You know, Susan, I'm sure...
Yes, I know, everybody's got a schedule.
More of those days, you know? Started early this morning.
And we're not even half done.
Yeah, for sure.
Will there be a motion to enter executive session for Icema Personnel, Medical? Roll call, please. Personnel, personnel compensation and Zari benefits.
I'm used to it.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki? Yes. Maureen?
Yes. Roll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki? Yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Your action?
Yes, there is, we, the board of commissioners is authorizing a medical waiver.
We have Ron Habauski out there waiting.
We'll get you ready. Yeah. Internal Services. We're back on, oops, we need to wait for Dehura.
Now, is that PSAP call gonna be in here?
Pardon?
Is that PSAP call gonna be in here, the conference call, it's gonna be in here, right?
I don't know.
The PSAP call, yes.
Well, that's at three o'clock, I'd be able to stay for that. I attended the nine-one-one meeting in Columbus and expressed, you know, our, our thinking. It wa, it was a good meeting, I mean, we had a call, I think it was facilitated by Glenn Nebraska, really, I think the state agreed to have a conference call. And we went into that thinking we had everything in order and came out of it realizing we did not.
So thus the call this afternoon, okay.
Yes, yes.
Oh, we're on the NEFCO appointment, aren't we?
Oh.
Is Deb coming in?
Okay, are you on NEFCO?
Yes.
Okay, so James Behler called yesterday morning and said they would be happy to continue to serve and they will attend the meetings.
They will.
They will, and Eric will be his alternate, so you need to decide on a commissioner, is that going to be you?
Austin.
Okay, so this is ready to go, you've got everybody who has confirmed, the only thing you're waiting for is an alternate for John Siska, if you want to appoint one.
Oh.
Dan Deriberry is no longer a county trustee.
Yes, so he can't serve.
No, but John said he makes, you saw his email, did you see his email, he makes every meeting, he says.
He does.
Yes, oh, he does, he does.
So you may have seen it?
Two weeks after and he served.
Right, that's what he said.
So why don't we just go ahead and-
Yeah. No alternate for John? Okay.
We can always have one.
Sure, absolutely.
So, do we need a resolution?
Yes, it's here, D eight.
Can I use your, um, head up, please?
Let him remind you.
I make a motion that we appoint to the Northeast Ohio Ford County Regional Planning and Development Organization for two thousand and sixteen, Jeff Lonsford, Todd Peace, Joseph Diorio.
Diorio?
Diorio.
Your health commissioner?
Um, health commissioner, John Siska, Vicki Klein.
And James.
And-
James Behler there?
James Behler.
James, he's crossed off.
Yeah, he, he is now, he's in part.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, oh, please, in the A.P.A. saying aye.
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 Good, we have our appointments. Next is the, uh, letter sent to the sheriff from the Corrections Board.
You have Michelle's comments, did you see it, in your ad packet, I gave you additional information. So Michelle's comments, just saying that typically the sheriff calls Michelle and maintenance to, yeah, to, um, to meet with them at a time of fire inspection and they were not called.
So.
And Internal Services has given some of the information.
I think everything's on track now.
I think so.
Yes, and we'll be able to start very soon with the, with the, I was gonna say, the rehab at the-
Of the jail.
At the jail, yeah. Okay. I think that actually doesn't, except for the referred item, which is-
Information only, Denise is working on that piece.
And the journal entries, you have an opportunity to review and vote, and a motion for those, right?
Yes.
Should we have, uh, Joanne and she's coming?
Yes.
And the prosecutor's correspondence, there's nothing to do with that, right, that's the MOU?
No, right.
That's just information only? Okay.
The MOU. Alright, so you ready for Joanne?
This is for real, ma'am.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Was this the newbies?
Hmm, yeah.
Does this mean exec again?
No.
Oh.
Oh, it is?
I've got, yeah, one personnel issue, one negotiation.
Okay. What negotiations, we've negotiated it for you.
Oh, good.
There's still the executive session.
Oh, yes, yes, definitely.
I make a motion, we go into it.
So Joanne's not coming in now?
That's okay.
Yes, yes, she will come.
I can mind Joanne.
Can we, do you mind if we get through Joanne first?
You're not allowed to?
Yes, go ahead, sit down. No, I only need that in the-
I'm taking the exercise.
Yeah, you can, you can hear Joanne now.
Okay, Joanne. I make a motion, we accept the contract change order number one and final for cargo paving for the Brady Lake Road surfacing project in Redden and Franklin Townships for the county engine.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please in the A.P.A. saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve a request for installment payments of connection charges for Desari.
I think it's Desiree, maybe.
Desiree.
Yeah.
Desiree, Scarlett, for connection to the sanitary system in the Forest County Regional Sewer District for water resources.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please in the A.P.A. saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion to enter into a general sewer agreement with the Cranberry Creek subdivision phase two project in Springfield Township for water resources.
Second.
Further discussion is somehow sewer agreement in Cranberry Creek, just don't seem to go hand in hand. Uh, if not, all in favor, please in the A.P.A. saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to enter into amendment number one with family and community services for intensive case management, therapeutic intervention services for JFS.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please in the A.P.A. saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to enter into agreement number six with family and community services for PRC domestic violence services for JFS.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please in the A.P.A. saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to enter into amendment number five with family and community services for PRC housing assistance services for JFS.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please in the A.P.A. saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
My next thing is, I can give you one quick update. We just finished our second call for the solid waste rare ring.
Oh, good.
A little bit ago, that's where I was when we came in. And we've been assured that we should have documentation by the end of day tomorrow, uh, tomorrow.
By Tuesday, the day tomorrow?
Yes, so that we'll have everything ready to come in to you folks on Tuesday.
Good.
Yeah.
And then I have the need for executive session.
Okay, do you guys know what other updates on anything, Joanne?
Um, not, not really at this point, um, maybe next week I can give you some more about where we are with the prosecutors, um, not the prosecutors, the corners, uh, you know, building and things like that, yeah. But my little blue sheet, there wasn't anything new.
Anything further on the Kent Courthouse concrete debacle?
Well, we, we met with, um, the prosecutor, Judge Poland, um, on, I met with them on Tuesday afternoon at the site. And we came away with several items that we want clarification on where they stand with the project. Judge Poland was adamant that at this juncture, we should get all of the concrete sealed. And, you know, so we're looking for pricing from them, from Cleveland Cement, because we don't wanna bring a different vendor in and then have people saying, well, it was you, it was you, it was you, to get that. But we've also asked for both Ruland and the Bowen Group to give me what they feel the fair prices, so that we know we're not getting gouged on that. And then there were several items on the, on the list of things that we, I wanted clarification from both the, um, construction management team and the architects to, to say that, yes, they've been completed satisfactorily, so we can move on. But yeah, it was pretty good, I'm just waiting now for the information to come back from everybody.
Okay. Okay.
Alright.
Alright, so need for executive session for compensation?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we go in the executive session for compensation.
Personnel compensation.
And I know Mr. Kabauski also has the need.
Yeah, and for labor negotiations.
Okay.
Can they, will you do it together?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, you know.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes, sorry.
Just jog out, haul again.
Portisary Recovery Center?
Um, are we on?
Matt coming?
He's on his way, he, he should be here any moment.
Are we on?
Yes.
I make a motion, we come out of the executive session.
Second.
Roll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
I make a motion.
Your action?
No.
No, there is no action.
I make a motion, we approve the journal entries.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please, uh, in the A.P.A. saying aye.
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 Okay.
We have Todd's budget resolution.
Oh, yeah, well, okay.
Can we do those right now?
He's, he's available on one of the-
The general, general and the-
General and non. Non.
Okay.
Did you wanna come up real quick?
Yes. I make a motion that we amend the General Fund two thousand and fifteen annual appropriation resolution number fourteen zero nine four one, adopted December eleventh, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? Now, roll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
A motion to amend the non-General Fund two thousand and fifteen annual appropriation resolution number fourteen zero nine four two, adopted December eleventh, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes. Is there anything else to come before us that we can do before, and unfortunately, in fifteen minutes, I have to be on a conference call.
Yeah.
So you're all gonna have to leave. No, only because we need this.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
I have to leave at three, so, um-
And I wanted to, I think I had requested him coming in and giving us-
Yes.
The update and-
Yes, and I think these are some of the young ladies that are there.
Yes.
Well, and actually, do you like to start? This is gonna be-
Can you speak or mark or?
Um, sure. Alright, well, I have packets for all of you with updated information, with all of the rules, policy and procedure. There's actually our screening tool that we use.
What about referral? Who refers to you? Who refers?
Um, we, the judges refer, we actually have, actually have fifteen residents that have been referred from the judges.
Do you wanna introduce yourself? Oh, yes.
Yes, Sarah Roberts, I am the clinical supervisor for Family and Community Services. So I oversee all of the mental health and AOD services from Family and Community Services in Portage County.
Okay. Okay, so maybe you, could you start with explaining the process? Let me back up, generally did this, uh, we committed to, I think, so many beds. So we probably need details about, we count on those beds, and I don't know, do we, I don't know if we get that weekly or as to how many beds are filled. And then I had a, I have a concern about the referral process, it was my understanding that, uh, female inmates were going to be released from our jail, our overcrowded jail, um, by the judges to Silver House. So I wanna know about that process. In addition, whether or not adult probation is in the loop and if they can refer. So I need to understand your referral process and what you've taken from there, anything else on your view?
That's good.
Okay, so the referral process, we actually have many ways that folks can be referred, one of the more common ways, like you spoke of, is actually court ordered by the judges from the jail. We actually will pick up residents from the Portage County Jail and transport them to our facility. We also have orders from folks who are released from Neocap, I'm sorry, they were kind of a tight fit in there. We also have, um, we also have releases from Neocap, um, that folks that are sentenced to Neocap, they finish their sentence, and then they're court ordered into our facility after. We also take referrals directly from probation, we take folks who are actually coming in off the streets. We also have a pretty good partnership with Town Hall Two and specifically Horizon House. Oftentimes, those ladies need step down, and we've actually received referrals from all of the above, we've seen, received them from Coman Please, Municipal Court, probation, Town Hall Two, Horizon House specifically, and Neocap.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention this, cause you, you used the word, I think, referred, or just walk, say, off the street. So that would be just somebody showing up, knocking on the door, saying, I need help?
No, that actually would be someone who is a member of the community, and sometimes how word has gotten out is some of the residents who actually have come here today, cause they would like to speak to how well they're doing. So sometimes residents can actually tell someone, I'm here, and this has really helped me, maybe you should try it. Also from just the AA community and NA community, um, you know, they, we have people who are involved in our program, they do some meetings there, they've sponsored folks that they know would benefit from the program and refer them. And so then they call and we do a screening process with folks who are referred, to make sure that they're appropriate, that they're getting into the right type of facility. And then if they need something else, then we refer them to that.
And I, I guess I'm posing all these questions because I have to be part of this conference call in ten minutes. And I would like to hear-
Yes.
Some of you that are willing, maybe to- If I'm not out of sequence here.
No, that's okay.
Go ahead, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Anna Nukum.
Sure.
Um, I am one that came from Neocap, um, I came directly from Neocap, they came and picked me up. And at Neocap, I learned, um, I, they taught me, um, you know, you do this, you can do this when something happens in an emergency, when you, when I feel like I'm going to relapse. But here, I get to live it. I mean, it's a different thing when you're hearing it, because I thought I was ready, but I wasn't, my daughter also is at, is at Athens, and she just recently relapsed. And I had all these guys to help me, or I probably wouldn't have made it. They did, and I, I mean, I would love, I like it, it's helped me so much that I wish, I mean, I pray that my daughter gets to come up. Because, I mean, Neocap helps, but, um, having people who, who, um, want, they, I mean, they make me feel like I'm somebody, like, like I deserve, I deserve to be a part of society, and, and I want that more than anything, so I have, I've been working really hard. And, um, I'm, I'm grateful, I'm really grateful that I have, I have this to, to back up, to lean on, I mean, I would, I wouldn't have made it, I don't. So, I mean, and all these guys, they help us, when something happens, you can go to somebody and say, oh, hey, listen, my daughter relapsed and I had to see her, hi, and that, I, I started trembling, but I called Cheryl and, um, she, she calmed me down, and these guys are like, it's okay, we'll get through this, you know, because they've lived it too. So I worry every night about my daughter, and obviously, I'm afraid, I don't want her to die. But I've learned to, um, that, that, I mean, they, they, they help me, if I can't stay strong, if I hit the ground too, it's not gonna help her ever. So it made me even stronger, these guys, I mean, as a group, or like a group, we, we all, um, like, yeah, we're a family, we got these tattoos, and they're semi-goings, and everybody in our house has, has worked on gotten, and it's, um, it means our story isn't over yet, we got a life to live, and we're somebody, we're, we wanna be, we wanna be something.
Congratulations, you guys, you really are an inspiration. You know, I'm, I'd like to share this with you, probably, was it three months ago now? We, um, we met with a group of, actually that night it happened to be ladies, four or five of them, and they each had either, I think most of them a daughter, one might have had a son, uh, and then one of the ladies, it was just her significant other, uh, who, we wanted to hear from them, uh, kind of, the circumstances of, of their situation and what treatments were out there for their loved ones. And one of the things that echoes in my mind, and you've just reinforced it, is the, the entities that were the most successful, or the services that were out there that were the most successful, were the ones that, in essence, left the door open. If you had a person who relapsed or whatever, they could always go there-
Right.
And be welcome. And, and that, that seemed to be, again, resoundingly, that's what the five or six of them said, so for you saying that, really gives proof positive that it works that way, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Others that can-
Alright, my name's Brooke Mason. I've been through Neocap, juvie numerous times, rehab when I was, you know, juvie mile two, county time, but I've never had an experience like this, I honestly wish this would have existed four years ago and I might be a lot different. I'm actually one of the first ones, I was there the first day it opened, Sarah came and picked me up from the jail, and a couple other people. But it is, I've never been like a member of society before, I've always just been dysfunctional, but now I work. And that's, another thing that's good about this program is some other programs don't give you the opportunity to go out and get a job, or find housing, or whatever. But here, we're allowed to work, we're allowed to, you know, figure out how to make ourselves stable. I'm twenty, I've been going through this since I was fourteen, nothing, I've never been this strong or made it this far, and like Anna said, we're a family, we really are, we all have each other's numbers, we're with each other all the time, we know we can depend on each other, and staff, and even the advocates that work at the building, after Cheryl leaves, there are people that- After Cheryl leaves, there are people that we can depend on and they understand and they make us feel like somebody.
They care.
I'm Erin Colley-Jay. I came from jail too. I've been, I've been to Neocap, I've been to prison, been to counties, been to Horizon House. This, I was a mess. I really thought that the only way that I would get out of my addiction was to die from it. And I really didn't think that I was worth anything. I lost my family. My family wouldn't talk to me. There was no, I didn't think there was any help in building relationships. When I got to the house, they just, they make me feel like that I'm worth something, that my life is worth more than what I thought it was going to be. I have a strong, a really strong relationship with my dad. I had to let go of a relationship with my mom because it was just too much. I couldn't do it, it got bad. But I have, I feel like I have a bunch of, bunch of moms now in the house that I can actually talk to. And if none of them are home, then there's advocates there that can help me, that can relate, or it's just nice having somebody to relate to. Because I'm the only addict in my family, so nobody knows what it's like to go through something like this. It's just, it gives me hope. It makes me feel like I'm somebody and I don't like to look at myself as an addict anymore because they make me feel like I'm a person in recovery.
How nice.
So it's just nice to feel like I'm part of a family, even if it's not what.
I'm Jennifer Kizner. We're going to do a selection here because I actually came from home. I had a really bad environment that I was living in and being sober on the outside, being around it is not very easy. I was in danger of relapsing, really bad. So I called Family and Community Services and got referred to the program through probation. I came to the program October 5th and it saved my life. I probably wouldn't be the person I am today. I have a chance to rebuild my relationship with my kids, my mother. I still have that addict sister that I'm trying to get help to as well. But that's the thing, when you're in the program and you go to IOP and you go to classes and meetings, you learn how to rub that off on people in the community that you know are struggling, you know, because there's a lot of pain out here in Portage County. And there's just, this program existed long ago. We might all be somewhere different because that's how well it works for people.
Congratulations to each of you. It's so impressive.
Thank you for coming in. We really appreciate it.
Maureen, I'm really sorry, but I do have to. We apologize for this because this has been the most, I think, productive part of our day, is to have all of you here. And to have you be so direct and sincere with us. Now I'm getting emotional, I'm sorry.
We thank you guys for the opportunity. Honestly, we wouldn't be anywhere without.
You saved all our lives.
And, you know, we can, because we have to use this room, make a call to the state, I wonder if you want to maybe adjourn to another room and you can continue to talk. Probably, I'd like to know some of the beyond staying at Silver House or maybe things, activities you're doing maybe in conjunction with that. I don't know if you, if it's appropriate, if you attend classes or anything like that or if there's tutorial programs that come in. But that, I'd like to know that.
Maureen, do you want me to continue this discussion?
Yes, yes. Again, thank you all so much.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry that we have to shut it off to Buffalo.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for all that you do.
Are we adjourned or?
Oh, that's right. Oh, Vicky, come back. We need to, we did journal entries. Can we adjourn?
Yes.
You have two resolutions to make it happen.
We did that.
We did those.
It is that, yeah. Motion to adjourn?
Second, any further discussion? If you indicate by saying aye.
Aye.